One recording.
Okay, thank you, Kate. All right, so I would like to welcome everyone to the Village of Williamsville, our work session for Monday, April 12th. And I guess most importantly tonight, I just want to welcome our newest trustee, David Sherman. So we're really thrilled to have David on board and we look forward to working with you. So for guests this evening, I don't have anyone listed, that was an oversight on my part, but Mr. Tom Stackhouse is here this evening. And I'd like, if you'd like Tom to come up to the mic and maybe give us an update as to what's happening with Lehigh Depot.
Thank you, thank you. Needless to say, we're excited. Things are starting to fall in place rather quickly, quickly, not quickly, but quick. The, I'll start with the first, the locomotive itself, maybe starting with the costs and so on, that would probably be the best thing. We, we have, as far as the locomotive itself, it started out at forty-five thousand. Final came down to twenty. And then Penny went on to say, it's yours, I'm donating it. So that was a big, big help. The, the money itself, or the income coming in, the town of Amherst has come up with fifty thousand dollars for us. Excuse me, and that, that was quite a surprise and very appreciative. The, by the county legislator, she came up with thirty thousand. And we have raised so far thirty-three thousand four hundred. So we've got a lot of nice pushing there, but it's going to leave us rather quickly. The cost of moving the locomotive from Dresden here is going to be, it's going to be trucked. Can't come by rail. Maybe to pass this around, show a picture of what it's going to be trucked on. A huge trailer with about a thousand tires on it. And it's with a company, pardon me, that is founded in Cornell, New York. Called Southern Tier Express. We have dealt with a company that they just absorbed, which was called Silk Road Transport. Silk Road brought the caboose that's over in the depot, they brought it from, what was it, Kate, from Hamburg? And so, but this is a new company, is very much experienced and so they're ready to go. And they're gonna, they're gonna charge us to move it from Dresden to Williamsville, fifty thousand dollars. There'll be other expenses with that. That will, excuse me, for instance, New York State DOT permits, state police, escort, and probably a lot of other things too. We're projecting probably fifty thousand there, pretty close to it. That's probably on the high side for, for the side things, but now, once it gets here, we're gonna have to have somebody take it off of the truck, off of the trailer, and put it on the track. And that's gonna be costly. We, I'm not familiar, or I'm not aware of price yet, but it's probably gonna be pretty high. Just to move it, you know. They're talking strategy as far as bringing it over here, coming over on the road. Their plan, they've already looked at this, they will pull down North Long Street and back into the station. It'll be on south, it will be pulled down north and then backing down south. Stand out there, oh, little boy this way, little boy that way. One thing that the, we found out that that trailer, those back wheels can turn. So that they, you know, it's not like your automobile where back wheels are, where they're gonna stay. Once it gets here, well, we were pushed somewhat into time on this because Southern Tier is committed from, well, they're planning on moving it between April fifteenth and May fifteenth. And they're, they're committed after the fifteenth for the whole summer. So it has to be done at this particular, excuse me, this particular time. We're not sure exactly of the date yet, but it'll probably be the end of April. It's gonna be a one-day move, hundred and thirty-some miles, I believe, here it is. And we'll coordinate with a rigging company here in town and put it on rail. We have to build a track for it. And thank goodness for the village, they're certainly a big, big helping hand to us. Right now, that piece of ground had been excavated, filled with stone and tramped down. And it's topped off and all, all we need now are the ties. And once the ties are in, we already have the rail. And we're getting ties donated, the tie plates, we have them along with spikes. So it's all, you know, right there, ready to go. Like I said, it's exciting, it's gonna be a lot of fun. And we're gonna have, try to get a lot of coverage of these things. The, the data, the exact data of the move, we're not certain on that. Any questions about that? About that move?
Do you need, do you need any other additional help, or is the site all ready to go?
Well, the, the, the site is not ready to go yet. But we're waiting just for the ties. And once we get those, and they're probably gonna be coming this week, coming.
Is there a company that you're laced the ties in? Or is that just something?
I think it's called, I think it's, maybe I shouldn't be saying this, but I think it's called DPW.
Okay, this is true, because obviously, this is which way, everything has to be done right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm back.
Now, are the Amherst Police gonna be involved also?
Probably to a certain extent, there's gonna be state troopers with, with the travel, but there won't be any Amherst Police in that aspect. They would stop the traffic on Main Street, you know, when we're crossing it for, when we're backing up, we'd need help there, but I haven't heard of anybody wanting to have more police.
Do the Amherst Police have the schedule yet?
No, we don't have it.
I mean, when you get there, I'll have the information.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, as soon as we find a date, yeah.
That's probably, I'm guessing, all tied into that New York State DOT permit.
Yeah.
You have to get in order to transport it.
Right, right.
Ben, do you, Ben, do you have any questions or, or comments?
Well, yeah, first I'm hearing that we're laying the ties too, so that, that's good. Am I, can you hear me? Uh, yeah, I am.
All right, well, maybe, did you have anything else to add?
Well, I wanted to, I was wondering about, there's been a lot of discussion about the where the locomotive is gonna be, that, where will the final place be? And I know probably ninety-five percent of the people on the, on this committee would like to have it right where it's going to be put, when it's delivered, rather than, you know, on the other side. On the other side of the depot, if you look at South Long, or standard South Long, look down the parking lot, you look at it and you'll see the area where the tracks were. It's nice and flat and a lot of traffic goes on that. DPW trucks, construction trucks, the road is in good shape, it's that area. But the area off to the side, you look, you'll see spines down the side. And when you look at the asphalt, just from the automobiles being parked there, it's all broken up. So that whole area is settling, whereas the area where we're putting the locomotive, that had, had track on for decades. And the ground is no more settling, or there wouldn't be for a long, long time.
Yeah, yeah, that, what you're, what you're alluding to, Tom, is the suggestion in the Parks Master Plan, relocating
Yes.
back to the original alignment. That concept predated the fact that this is coming in four weeks. So you win. We're, we're gonna be working around you from now on.
Yeah.
We, we certainly do appreciate, we like the, where it is, but the other thing is that if it came up here and was placed there and then later moved, which of course it could be, I couldn't imagine what the cost would have to be.
Yeah, it'd be extraordinary, yeah, I mean, you know, it, the, the trouble with South Long, as, as part of the Parks Plan, is that it's, I've been describing it as one of those tile houses. You gotta move one thing so you can move another, so you can move another, so you can move another, right? So, you know, right now, conceptually, the parking that's in front of the depot would have to be replaced before we could forego it.
Right.
And where would that be replaced? Well, with a brand-new parking lot on ninety-six South Long, oh wait, DPW's using ninety-six South Long. So then there it is, that go, and so like, for us to move all the shells in advance of this coming, when it was, when it was a, an optimistic fantasy, out at some, you know, future date, this seemed like a reasonable concept, but now that it's literally here or about to be here, then it's gonna go where it's gonna go and we're gonna work around it.
Well, we certainly do appreciate, we certainly appreciate all the help, the, the village and trustees and DPW have been to us. It's, it's just unbelievable, we couldn't ask for more, really. Were there any other questions?
When do you anticipate it would be ready for tourism and tourists to, because I mean, I don't know how much work it needs or that kind of stuff.
Well, it's in very good shape. There's, you know, some dinges here and there, a couple of broken windows and all. It would depend on really the funding that we would, could raise for that because it, I don't think it would be this year, it'll be, it'll be here. But, and people will, will look at it, but not to the point that we would like them to be able to look at it in the future because the whole thing has to be painted. Certain, for instance, certain parts on, on it were taken off, or will be taken off. Some large pieces on each end, and they'll have to be put back on. I wouldn't look for tourism until next year sometime. And that's, I think, pushing it, that we're anticipating that once we get this, as soon as, as the truck is backing in with that on there, we're gonna be out there with buckets with the, with the word donations on it.
Is there any, is there any plan for fencing or any, you know, I, I'm, I'm a little worried if, if this summer, it's not available and, and there may be parts off that for a temporary period of time. We also have to vandal proof it. And, and, whether they're gonna have cameras on it all the time or need to get more cameras on it. Well, I, I would say that that's something that has to be a concern.
Oh, definitely. That one whole, that whole side of the faces, like the section house, that whole side, we don't have any cameras there. The only cameras that even approaches anywhere near is the one that's on the roof of the depot outside on that end, and it's, you know, fairly wide, but not what we should have to protect it. The other side's protected real well, but I, I don't know that there's, other than broken windows, things like that, there's not that much that they would, that would have. But we're, we're gonna protect it, there's no question about it, and, you know, we've been real lucky in the last few years. For a while there, we were having a lot of trouble. And I think with all the construction that's around there now, finally staying, staying away from that section.
Would, would it even necessitate temporary fencing around it?
We hadn't, we hadn't thought of that, of doing that.
All right. Okay, I guess, you know, we're trying, trying to look at what things can happen that we don't want it to happen.
Yes, yeah, well, one of the things, and a lot of places have done this, that'll have equipment and, and put fences around it. And people don't like to take pictures of items with fences around, you know. And especially the rail fence, but they don't pay your way. But
Tom, are you planning on doing any fundraising events? I know you usually are pretty active down there during the summer, fall months at the depot.
Well, you know, last, this past year, we really took it on the chin like everybody else. We lost Touch Truck, that's our biggest fundraiser. And we had everything canceled last, you know, this past year. The Society took it on the chin real bad. They lost two train shows and that was, that's thirty thousand dollars. Medina didn't run the trains like they did our cars on that, which generate money. And that's usually around twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. So there was over fifty thousand dollars from the Society and then the, but no, we will, we're not going to be able to, I don't think, be too active down there because of the crisis that we're into right now. But we are planning a few things. Now, last year, we had a couple of things, there was a little bit of light on the, at the end of the tunnel. Not very bright, but, you know, we had a garage sale, made some money there. And we've been very fortunate, we had two, three situations over the summer and into the fall.
Try again.
Where there was plans to do things at Glen Park up the falls, like bridal photographs and all. And luckily, it rained. And guess who had a dry spot? And we had one, one couple come in, they were getting married that day. It told us eleven o'clock in the morning, they were getting married later on. They had planned up here at the Falls. And it was gonna be a small wedding, strictly family, six o'clock, well, five o'clock, the groom and his brother were there. Putting little arbor up, flowers all over it. Six o'clock they came, they're all in there, the bride was in her gown, the guys were in tux. And they performed a little ceremony there. And by seven o'clock, they were in the eagle house, all having a dinner. So, and then we had a couple where, where again, there was gonna be photographs taken at the, at the Falls, and it was a bad day. And they came in, did it in the, in the station and in the caboose. And they, you know, they had never thought of that, no, this is great. So we're gonna put more for things like this, for small groups, family gatherings. Come down and have pizza in the, in the depot. We don't cook, nothing like that, we can bring in whatever and no alcohol. So it's, that, we're planning to have another garage sale, a lot of material accumulated for that. And we're having Marty Bauer with a couple of programs. But it really just depends on, on how many people we're allowed to, you know, have in, in the area, so we'll keep working.
Tom, one last question about the location, is there an opportunity to roll the cars forward? Like if I needed like five feet or something, would there be an opportunity to scoot everything forward or no?
Have we done that?
Yeah, no, I know, I realize you.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure they're allowing, I think, twenty feet for the locomotive.
And how long's the locomotive? It's about eighteen. Okay.
All right, yeah, I think they, I think they're doing just enough just to put that locomotive in front of those cars and
Okay.
Thank you so much for the update.
Oh, you're welcome. Please give a heart if we can do any, you know, if you have any questions.
And I know you'll keep in touch with Kate, as far as, you know, having a, you know, a media day when the car doesn't run and so forth. And you can help coordinate all of that as well.
Great, great. Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Just push us on it and congratulations on being this close.
It's been a long way.
I, I should have asked you this like two weeks ago. What year roughly was that locomotive manufactured, roughly?
In the forties, late forties. Possibly, yeah. I'll get that.
You have me on video.
So let's go into correspondence, does anyone have anything?
Okay.
That's one thing, yes, you wanna talk about it?
Well,
I have that and something else.
We've, we've all seen the letter, I think, of Doug, Doug Kern, who has a group that does performances, but also is talking or, or saying that he would, he would like to manage the meeting house, basically, for the next year. And, and see what, what kinds of success he could have by using his contacts and, and trying to utilize the meeting house way beyond what it has been in the past. I did talk to him about it, made him doubly aware of the fact that it's gonna be on the market. And he said, well, if you sell it quickly, you sell it quickly. If you don't, then I can give you a pretty decent year on it, when it's still part of your, your property. So I, I, I'd like to recommend that we consider Doug's letter and maybe move in that direction. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but he's, he has contacts, he has experience. He knows what it means to organize this kind of thing and, and try to bring more, some, some income into the building. So I, I see this, this, in my estimation, kind of a no-brainer, that, that, that it could be good for us. And even if at the end of the year or during that year it sells, then that's good for us also. So that's kind of where I'm, I'm coming from.
So, so on that point, I'm just gonna jump right over to the meeting house discussion. I did speak with Supervisor Colpa today. And I just wanted to know if he had any feedback regarding the town of Amherst and their interest in person, in purchasing the building. And he said that the town remains interested, believes it has some good programming uses for the building, and he was meeting with the Director of Youth and Recreation over at the town, who married Diana Polley today. But she initially, upon their conversation, thought that they would have some good usage for programming. And our next steps with the town would be to include a discussion of terms between myself and Supervisor Colpa. And he mentioned also bringing U-Chip into the discussion as well as one of the town attorneys. And that's where we're at right now with it. So I do think that, you know, Doug Kern, I think that's a very generous offer. And I think it's certainly my reply back to him was that it's an offer that I would be interested in discussing once we have some type of direction as to whether or not the town of Amherst is going to move forward, you know, within
Were they able to give us any kind of a timeline from the town?
I should, I, I hope to have a better answer by our next meeting, which is April twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So I think that they're, they're going to, they're in the middle of doing their due diligence right now. And I think that it's, you know, either it's something that's gonna work for them or it's not, and we just need to discuss the terms.
Okay.
So, but I, I do think, you know, to your point, Basil, I think that that Doug's offer is something that we should ultimately consider when we get to that point.
Well, the, the town would be a, like a long-term offer, that's for sure.
Absolutely, yes, agree. But also, I would say too, you know, the, you know, Doug could certainly work in conjunction with the town of Amherst. My, it doesn't need to, you know, if they were to take ownership of it, perhaps there's some way that he could help out in, in that respect.
Okay.
Any other comments on Doug's letter?
Can you guys hear me now, if I jump in? Can anybody in the auditorium hear me?
I'm wondering, I, I mean, obviously, it's, it's early days yet here, but if Amherst Youth and Rec knows that they have a facility that they can program, and Doug Kern, let's say, is an individual who knows, yes, property to be programmed. And they can both individually or jointly put, breathe life into the facility. Then I guess I wonder if selling it is necessary to accomplish that.
Well, it's, that's a good point, and something we can discuss and explore further, I don't have an answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, because it, because there's a dollar sense to this, right? And if there's, if there's no dollars, then is there any sense? That was kind of the thing, right, was that theoretically, there's, there's some, it, it relieves us of a burden while simultaneously achieving other goals. And if we get one without the other, then maybe, maybe we just work out a deal with Amherst Youth and Rec and say, have at it, let's, let's program it. And they become the meeting house.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's definitely something that we will, and should, so, so, yeah. Good point. Any, the other correspondence I had was a letter from the Village Preservation Foundation, just appreciating our support in sponsoring a large pot of flowers that are displayed on Main Street. So I just wanted to acknowledge them, they've really been a great partner in helping to beautify Main Street and, you know, with the large flower pots. Any other additional comments on that?
Not at the moment.
Can I go back to the depot now that I think you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I bet.
So we're putting the ties in too?
No, you're not, oh, you wait, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let Tom answer that. Tom, do you wanna?
So you hoping, is that what you're hoping for?
Wishful hoping.
Wishful, thank you.
Or at least maybe some help with the guys too, and that would
Or at least maybe some help with the guys too and that would, uh, certainly help us.
Uh, I'm hearing a yes.
Yeah, so, but I, you're having, the, the ties themselves is, are being delivered to the depot, correct? That's, that's all gonna, okay. So I think the answer to that, yes, Ben.
Okay. When?
I do it tomorrow. Sometime between April fifteenth and May fifteenth.
No, that, that's when the locomotive comes.
That's, that's too late. Sometime between now and April fifteenth.
That's three days away.
No, it's, that's not rational either. I mean, it's, you, you don't have a date for delivery yet, so it's obviously not April fifteenth. It's probably not within the next week, right? I mean, when are you expecting to receive?
I was thinking would be more towards the end of the month.
End of April?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
More like the end of April.
Okay.
That's right.
Just, uh, let us know.
We will. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, no further correspondence. We'll move on to grants. Oh, yes. Yes, go ahead. Oh, actually, we were, I had that under Island Park.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Keaton, do you wanna give us the grants updates?
I have something. Um, the woman that owns Pumpkins.
Yes.
Called and she would like to put a mural on the side of the building. My first question to her was, do you own the building? She said, no, but the owner is on board with it. So I told, she told me that it would not be a sales site. I think it would be something to promote the village. Um, so I said, I would bring it to you and, uh, yeah, and I told, I think I mentioned to her that she would have to, you know, present what they're gonna do to the board, just like beautification had to before. That mural was put. Is that true?
Well, I think the reason beautification approached us because we own the building, the village.
And I told them.
Well, okay, but hon- honestly, so, so two things. So I love that idea and I encourage them to go ahead forward with it. And, um, secondly, I would never really want to dictate like my, my oversight of what they wanna put on the building now. So.
No, but just to make sure they're not putting anything.
What do you think Pumpkins is gonna put on their building?
Well, she said it's gonna be geared towards the village, like, so. But you never make an artist in there and, you know, the trees may look like.
Oh, Lord.
Well, it's art. Art is fair. It's a personal, every, every, I, what it be.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah, so honestly, I mean, if this, this board's okay with it not coming in front of it, I'm fine with it.
Just to clarify, which, which building?
Pumpkins. Pumpkins. It's the children's clothing store by the parking lot.
Oh, the store, that store, okay.
Immediately to the right of fifty-five hundred.
Right, where the parking.
Right.
Hmm, yeah. I mean, it's an ideal location.
So.
I, we don't have any, it doesn't, it's not a sign.
Yeah.
You know, they're painting their building. They just happen to be painting it with a picture instead of, you know.
Yeah.
And if it, and if it violates, you know, community decor, well, we'll deal with that when it comes, right?
Right. But I can understand you bringing, cause we did, but I think the difference was is that it's on Villa Tal, which we oversee essentially. But being that it's an independent private business, I don't think we have any oversight on that. So if she calls back, you can just maybe update a little bit.
Right. I mean, if she was to show us what she's doing.
We'd love to see it, but sure would be great.
Okay, I'll let her know. That's all I got.
Great. Keaton, grants, any answers?
Yes, um, just a couple of dates. Um, I'm working on a narrative for the DOT tree grants. Um, that kind of came about last minute in December. That is began by.
What's in this?
Yes, right.
Two months ago.
The narrative part just got to my desk about a week and a half. That's, uh, but everything's, uh, kind of moving along very quickly on that. We just gotta get everything to the state so that they, we can get reimbursed for that ASAP. So, um, the, um.
That's for union?
Yes, that's the South Union Tree Planting. Um, as far as playground grant, um, we have all the information we need to kind of move forward. Judy's got a lot, a lot of little things to do as far as, uh, um, providing them budget sheets, et cetera. Um, so she's working on that. So, um, about a week and a half ago, we kind of flip flopped. I gave her all the information I had for playgrounds and she gave me all the information she had on tree. So, um, kind of working together to get those done, uh, mid-spring here. The, um, next meeting hopefully with our grant writers Bernie and Anthony Rotella should be hopefully, uh, next week. Um, the annual, um, consolidated funding application, which is a state grant. Uh, that should come out within the next four to six weeks, somewhere in there. No, is my timing wrong? No, I'm correct. Sorry. It's usually due in July, comes out in May. So, um, it's kind of working ahead of myself there. But, uh, um, that's all I have right now. Uh, Judy, is there anything that I'm, that I'm missing?
Do we know, do we know anything about the state of Bay Area at this point? They haven't seen?
Uh, last time we talked to, talked to, uh, the grant writers, they didn't really know too much. Um, they know it was gonna happen, that it was gonna be released and this is good. Nothing last year, it's golden. So, um, you know, nothing, you know, no information really even on the pot of money that's gonna be allowed here for these reasons. So, um, it'll be a surprise to all of us when we know pretty shortly. So.
Okay. Well, let me know as soon as you can, cause if there's, if there's places we can spend money, I can think of them.
Absolutely. Um, I, I know you better. The, uh, the, the next meeting, um, at the end of the month, we'll, we'll know a lot more. So, all right.
All right. Thank you, Keaton. Uh, agenda review, the agenda's pretty simple tonight.
As far as.
Yes, so not really anything on that. So we'll get right into, um, liaison reports, board reports. So the first thing I have is sidewalk seating. Tim Masters, our code enforcement officer, asked me to.
Um, I just gotta give my text a little bit where we're gonna start that. So if you wanna go to the next item?
I will. Thank you. Okay.
Exactly. You're talking about like outdoor.
Outdoor seating, yeah. So well, he's gonna, Keaton's gonna let him know. So I'll skip to number two, which is our expenditure procedures. So I just, um, I'm gonna have Administrator Kendra kind of go over all of this. But I guess the whole reason, or one of the reasons that this is on the agenda tonight for discussion is that, um, evidently we, um, had another crosswalk rendering for the three-way crosswalk at South Cayuga drawn up to the total of five thousand four hundred dollars. And I wasn't really sure who approved that, um, that drawing to be done. But at this point, we owe them the money for it, so we need to pay it. So I just wanted to kind of clarify what our procedure is for, um, involving those types of expenses. And Administrator Kendra, I'll let you go over that.
Um, typically, the, if, if there's anything that goes through engineering, we approve the expense first. And they usually very good with it. Um, the engineer will call and say, has it been approved yet? And then I'll tell them. This one, I think because there were just so many people talking about what they wanna make changes and everything. I think it just kind of got shuffled and didn't get approved.
Prior to the.
Prior to getting actually started work on it. But I did talk to Ben about it and we did owe the money and.
And see.
It was, uh, the ones further down in front of, uh, Dyson.
Yeah, and then I don't know if any, anyone has done on the, um.
What?
Oh, no, no.
Ben, why don't you address it?
No, that, it was not the quote unquote alternate location that Traffic and Safety recommended. This was a site at the, at the intersection. Again, it wasn't a diagonal. It was perpendicular across after we'd already gone to bid with a perpendicular. Well, not, not to bid, but had gotten drawings to the point near bidding of the diagonal walk. So they backed up and they did a perpendicular walk. And then they did another walk with a raised crosswalk. So there was a lot of minute grading and, and analysis of that very small corner after they had already taken this project to a point near, uh, bid. So this was.
Just to redo. So what, okay, so initially there were two drawings done with the crosswalk. One was diagonal and one was perpendicular.
And those were wholly conceptual without any analysis whatsoever.
Okay, so you're saying what this fifty-four hundred was for to make it to address the perpendicular crosswalk at the corner of Milton and South Cayuga? And to make it so it could mesh with the grading concerns that were on that, it were in that general area, correct?
Correct. There, that was, those are the investigations that they were undertaking.
Okay, well then that makes sense. Okay, all right. I'm sorry. I misunderstood then what our discussion was about that location. So. Um, okay, so I, I'm curious, what did, uh, was there like a railing that's required now? Or what exactly changed from the initial drawing to the second drawing?
They, they designed an elevated crosswalk similar to what you see down on Spring Street or Glen Avenue uh, to try to mitigate the, the knee for a rail. So that was, that was their investigation.
Okay, so that's a, that's something we never even discussed.
So, uh, it'll be elevated like Spring Street, but there's still gonna be a rail because we need to address that grading issue?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's close enough to, to warrant, yes, the rail.
Okay. And raised, is that kind of like a.
Yeah, so, so I guess, yeah.
Like on spring? On what? That's right, right.
So, so Ben, the final, are we at a final iteration of this?
Oh, no. I, no, not, I mean, we have an iteration. No, we're not at a final iteration. No, no.
Okay, so we're not at a construction documents.
No, they, they.
They've extended man hours trying to chase multiple iterations of this thing, trying to figure out the best.
Yes, they did.
Now, forgive me because my mind is fuzzy, but we talked, uh, was last meeting or two meetings ago about the idea of a, another alternate location that was essentially in front of Dave Sutton's house, just slightly north of the intersection. And there was like, uh, I feel like there was a five thousand dollar number to like resurvey that area or something.
Yep.
Am I memory correct?
Yeah, that was to do it all over again.
Right. And we chose not to pursue that, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
This was all done prior to.
To that.
The suggestion of a relocation of the actual physical location of the walk.
Right, okay. And so then I guess the, the final question I have again, cause I'm fuzzy, is the, the funding source for this project is what?
None yet.
Oh, so you're grand.
Right, yeah, right.
Gotcha, okay.
Which we would ultimately then, uh, get reimbursed for the design. Typically, that's a, that is an acceptable reimbursement.
So then do we have, let's say we can get a grant, you know, a grant comes available two months from now. And so the drawings that we have, are those substantial to meet what need we have to apply for that grant?
I guess it depends where do you want the crosswalk.
Well, I thought, and, and so maybe that's something we need to clarify here because I, I felt, and I, you know, and I'm a little fuzzy on this too cause I feel like we've addressed every which way on this. But, um, I thought that we agreed as a board that the most sensible location for the crosswalk and it didn't have any necessary safety concerns. The only concern was the grading was at the corner of Milton and South Cayuga. And feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but that was what my recollection was when we sat up here and discussed it. Right at the corner.
That was the last, that was the last discussion. I mean, there were, there were multiple other conversations, like Basil was suggesting, you know, he could go and talk to the property owner. I had suggested the idea of can we get rid of that second curb cut that's at the intersection? There was a discussion, the possibility of relocating further north a little bit, but we would need more survey information to figure out if we could mitigate the grade change. I mean, it was like, there's like so many different variations on the theme here. So the question is, do we continue studying it?
Well, I, I was going.
Or can we just stop and say this is it?
Well, that's, that's kind of where I was because we also, if you look at the comprehensive plan, that crosswalk is lo- located right at the corner of Milton and Cayuga. So if we can get around any issue with the grading and it sounds like we're able to, which might entail a railing, which isn't the end of the world, um, at a ramp. So I'm, I'm very confident and comfortable with saying, you know, let's, let's put it at this location. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, as long as it has the proper safety features.
Right.
Why not?
Yeah.
Location.
Okay.
Current location, that seems to be the best spot.
It really is. I mean.
It certainly, I mean, as we've beat this horse, I mean, it, it definitely is the.
We've, we've overbeat the horse at this point.
Yeah, the path. I mean, it's the path of travel.
It is. It's, you know, I, I cross that street frequently and I can tell you that's where I cross. So I think it's the safest crossing point and certainly the most visible crossing point in that location. So. So if everybody here is in agreement, that this is kind of where we're landing and we can move forward. And, um, the time comes when that grant becomes available, we will be able to, you know, apply for it. We'll have all of our paperwork in order essentially, right Ben?
Well, uh, answer me if the diagonal crosswalk is still acceptable in that scheme with railings on the walkways.
Well, the diagonal crosswalk, no, because the biggest safety concern there was that, you know, where do you stop? If it's diagonal, you know, you're gonna have cars stopping at one point on one side and cars stopping at another. And so, and my understanding is that that was a, a safety concern for traffic and safety.
Right. So I, I think, I think we're definitely, it definitely must be a perpendicular solution.
Okay.
Ben, so this extra from SHU.
Yep.
Is just, is just that, right? It's an extra because they kind of went backwards before they could go forwards again. So is there money left on their contract for construction documents?
Yeah, there was another two, well, they've, they've done one set of construction documents. That's the.
All right. So, so I guess the question is, what is?
Ninety percent. There might be a little bit left to do some construction administration, which we could pull from them.
All right. Well, I guess the point is, is that if we're, if the solution is perpendicular with railings and we don't have construction documents for that yet.
We need a proposal.
Yes, we need to know what's left.
And that's sort of the, the issue here was, was having them do things. And then there was no mention of additional compensation to begin with.
Right.
And, and which is unusual because usually that is, they, they're, they're very good about raising their hand, uh, in advance. I think part of this was the, the rush nature of it and they just plowing ahead, trying to meet my demands. And things got ahead of us.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, the, the thing is, we don't have a schedule for this, so we can, we don't need to, we don't need to break anything back with it. So.
But I, can we at least agree or, you know, or disagree, whatever, that, you know, we found a, a final location for this crosswalk when it comes to fruition? Um, is there anyone who has an issue with it going perpendicular at the corner of Milton and Cayuga? Because I, I feel like that's, that's the issue too. I think there's been a lot of back and forth between this board and traffic and safety and. So.
Well, as a board member, I'm for it.
Okay, I'm for it. Matt, are you?
Yeah, I'm for it. I, you know, I, I don't, I, at this point, I don't think that any of the concerns that have been raised by traffic and safety are substantive enough to say that it's inappropriate.
Okay.
You know, it's just been preferential.
Okay.
I'm in favor as well.
Okay. All right, great. So, um, I think we're finally clear now as to what direction this should be going in. And Ben, whatever it is that we need to do to get it across the finish line and then wait for some grant money, that's what we should be doing.
With or without additional expenditures from our engineer?
We need to know what that number is.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, okay, we will find that number.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, do you have Tim on?
Yes, Tim's ready.
Okay, great. So, um, Tim Masters is our code enforcement officer and he's gonna be joining us now. And, uh, we are going to discuss outdoor sidewalk seating.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, hello. Uh, so the question that's come up a couple of times last month or so is the board's feeling on some tables on the sidewalk in front of the rest. Some tables on the sidewalk in front of the restaurants outside of their outdoor seating approval. If you probably see it like in front of Lloyd's, or not Lloyd's, um the juice bar and Overwinter Coffee has a couple. Um, Cher has done a couple, which is just a small round table with two chairs. Before I pursued maybe any code changes, I just wanted to make get the board's feeling on whether they want that or. We just wanna do the way we've been doing it, nothing on the sidewalk, just kind of what your guys' feelings are.
I was under the impression we didn't have control over that service.
Well, wha- well, I'm I'm sorry, so th- this is Chip, um I I just wanna make sure I understand what's going on here too. Because our code does allow. Seed seasonal outdoor seating on the public sidewalk, there's just certain, you know, they're supposed to provide. Just proof of insurance and and those sorts of things. You know, this is any portion of the seasonal outdoor seat. What's that?
But it's on Main Street sidewalks though.
Well, so that depends, because as I think most people are aware, and this is weird, the. The the, I actually don't think the width of the DOT right away necessarily varies, although maybe it does. But the but the frontage of the buildings along Main Street, I think, and how close they are to that vary. So some places I don't think have that room, and I would agree with you, if we're talking New York State DOT right away. That's up, that they would need to get DOT approval for that, DOT is very strict about the right away. But our code, so putting that issue aside, our code does allow for approvals. Of seasonal outdoor seating in the public right away, it just requires some insurance. And it needs to be approved by a player like any other seasonal outdoor seating.
Is that outside of like the raised area and pedestrian safety features? Like they just wanna put a small table with some chairs and just go to get that.
Well, I think, I I think the issue, yeah, because you you know, our s- our outdoor city requirement does require sort of barriers. But I think if you're on the side, I mean, I don't know, we'd have to actually look at it, turn to me, but but as long as you're up on this. Presumably the sidewalk is, you know, up above the street level, right, there's that curve, I I mean, I think that the curb would be the barrier in that. Scenario, not that the seating would go right to the curb, but that's the way I envision that. And I mean, we we must have, the the intent of this when this was drafted must have been, I I I don't think it necessarily required. An additional platform. Uh, for sidewalk seating, but I guess that's maybe for an interpret, somebody could have a different interpretation of that, I suppose.
So I I think what what Tim is trying to maybe find out is, you know, so I like like I'll use our new coffee shop, Overwinter Coffee. Right, they have small tables literally right up against the building, so is that considered DOT's property? Or and and.
We would have to look. We would really have to look at the survey of. Of of that property and or the 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 right away. Which I think we have for the length of Main Street from the picture survey that that shows the entire length of Main Street. Where exactly the DOT right away is.
Yeah, I I find it hard to believe the rock building is not on a public right away. Um, it's not pushed back at all from the curb from the sidewalk or anything, I mean, it so, but the I think the burden lies.
It's all, it's it's all defined, the DOT's right away is all defined from the center, you know, it it's it's just, it's whatever the width is, I I can't remember, what is it? Yeah, so fifty feet from the center either way.
Right, so.
Essentially where it is, so.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things, um thing one, looking at our own code here, there's a photograph of inappropriate to 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 point about. Um, curving, so here's a picture of a of tables sitting on a sidewalk. Located, you know, with a six inch curve, but it lacks necessary railing, this is noted as inappropriate. Second thing is, we do show inappropriate seating, um lacking aesthetic quality. Features and inappropriate barriers to vehicles and they clearly show like just like a little, you know, droopy chain. You know, malarkey thing, right? So so there's clearly, you know, something there and then, you know, the the appropriate thing is to show like an actual bona fide full blown thing. So there's a couple of, you know, guidance things there, the issue of whether or not it's permitted on the DOT right away could only be answered by the DOT. And then um I think the other part of it is um alcohol licensing. You know, you you're not allowed to have, you know, if 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 even if the DOT allowed Cher to have those two seats in front of their building there. It would theoretically be allowed to offer alcohol at those two seats because they're not.
So A- A- SLA has its own process on that, so they issued last summer. They issued guidance relying on uh one of, you know, the many, many executive orders. Uh, issued by the governor related to the pandemic that allowed licensed premises, restaurants, bars, et cetera. To expand their premises outdoors. Um, and all they needed to do, they they need to file their those revised drawings, that's temporary. And it's all that's currently been extended through May sixth, that's probably gonna get extended again, but to Matt's point. So normally, if if they're doing it on their own private property or property that they have leased or whatever. Um, they just need to file with SLA a drawing that says here's our temporary outdoor seating area. Uh, within five days of starting to do that and and they don't need any sort of municipal approval for that unless one is otherwise required. Um, but if they are going to, if that expansion is gonna be on the public property, which is I think what's being described here. And then also there is a process set forth in that SLA guidance that requires them to. The the municipality essentially to sign off on that. Um, so yeah, if they're serving alcohol outside. Um, under that authority of those executive orders, then we also need to then make sure that they're. Are doing what they need to do with respect to getting the municipal sign off on that too.
I guess the last thing, there are, there are lots of examples of this, I think Spot always has a handful of small, you know. Cafe tables in front of the building.
They also have the those barriers, so.
They do have the barriers, right, exactly, so it's so they, I I would say that they, you know, theoretically, yeah, you know. Obviously, the DOT is zoning at all, right, and so they're, they get their say no matter what, but. You know, like in the city of Buffalo, you have to always maintain the five foot walking path. No matter what you put in front of it, so if you don't have the dimensions to do that, including the barriers and all the other things that are required, then you can't do it. And I think we should probably follow the same process. At a minimum, I mean, it's state code to have five foot clear sidewalks.
Right, I I mean, I I I agree with that, I guess we're still just, you know, as far as Tim is concerned. You know, I guess it's a case by case basis as to whether or not those tables are on their own property or on DOT's right of way.
I mean, I I can look into that for each one, that's fine, I guess what I'm asking is, do do I need to send them the planning board for this approval? It's, these aren't assist, there aren't a typical outdoor seating scenario, these are for Overwinter Coffee, it's just you sit out there and have a cup of coffee. Not really much different than a public bench. Um, you know, shares is a little different because I think they did use theirs for seating, but that one's a little of a gray area. Whether they should include that to planning board, but like juice bar, you know, it's not like you're sitting there eating a meal, you're just sitting there enjoying the outside. Drinking a beverage, so I just don't know if we should differentiate or if we care, you know, I normally in these situations would just say. You know, talk to the DOT, but I need to do my part to know if we if we wanna ignore these, put a two table limit on it, put a one table limit on it. Not care altogether, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, these are, these are temporary, right, I mean, they literally put them out and take them in every day too, right?
Correct, I don't think they leave them out all the time, again, I haven't, because it's kind of a newer thing with a lot of the some with some of the restaurants, I should say. Um, like Juice Bars is out all season, I think he leaves them out, as far as I know, but I think Overwinter takes theirs in every night, I think.
I mean, I I I think from a code perspective, I mean, whether this is the right policy or not, I can't say. And and whether there's the board or the mayor wants to do something as a pandemic issue is yet another question. Um. But I do think that what if they're putting tables out there to serve their customers and they're their tables. That falls within the the definition of seasonal outdoor seating that requires a permit. Um, you know, again, fair question as to whether that's, you know, whether we want that to continue to be the case or. Wanna make any tweaks to that or have some sort of level under which maybe you don't need a permit, whatever, that's up to the board to decide, but. I I do think that the way the code is drafted, they're putting something if to on their own property or. On the public right of way that's providing seating for their establishment. Then the question becomes whether that would be covered under the current sort of relief that has been offered to establishments to. Not require them to go or not necessarily wait to have to get planning board approval. Uh, to do that um during the state of emergency, but that they should, if they're going to do that, then they should be filing. A application with the planning board for that, I also think it's a fair question. You you're right, Matt, I mean, I'm looking at this code again too, and you know, it shows certainly as an inappropriate. Figure here, one that's clearly from my own neighborhood. Um, that shows basically a bunch of tables that are just at right outside, you know, describing essentially what Tim's describing. You know, again, that's a policy choice that was made at the time this was drafted, it's not carved in stone, but um. You you know, th- this would seem to indicate if they do want the planning board that, geez, you know, you haven't delineated, you know. Lacks aesthetic quality and features appropriate barriers uh to vehicles, even though it's on, even though they're on the sidewalk. I mean, there's two essentially sidewalk cafe like figures in here that are labeled as inappropriate. Um, I I I do think that there could be, I mean, some of these other inappropriate places that show. You know, I I think it's a fair question as to whether it really makes a ton of sense, I guess, as to whether, I mean, you can understand why you wanna have a lot of protection. If cars are pulling straight in and like a parking lot. Towards where the seating is versus on Main Street where at best a car is gonna be backing into parallel park. Near there, I mean, maybe maybe you have equal concerns about that, but um but at any rate, I I do think this, I think Tim user, I I think these raise. Some questions that we we'd have to look at it, because as was discussed last time, I do think that. Outdoor, I I assume that. More and more of the restaurants in the village are gonna wanna be doing exactly what's being typed, so. I think the board needs to decide whether they wanna allow that, and if they do, they probably need to make some tweaks to this code.
Yeah, so I I mean, that obviously the code was written pre pandemic and I think a lot has certainly changed with outdoor seating since the pandemic. It's as in play, so I I mean, personally, I like seeing those outdoor tables and I like. Giving people the option, if they're uncomfortable still sitting inside a restaurant, that they can go in, they can grab a coffee or a or a. A juice and then they have an option rather than rushing and sitting and idling their car while they drink it, they have an outdoor. Safer maybe option to enjoy that, so for me, you know, whatever we need to do to maybe keep that in play, I think it's a good thing.
I just took a a quick look over at Overwinter and um they, you know, I mean, can't really take today because the weather wasn't great. But uh, you know, they don't have the tables up right now, so um I did notice on Friday that it seems like at the end of the day. You know, they they close at four o'clock, so um at the end of the day, they just take them in like they they would any other tables, flip them upside down and, you know.
Is this something that we could just put under one of these executive orders or whatever we do and just let it go this season? And then we can maybe tweak these outdoor seating codes at a later date, or we wanna try and handle this, I just don't, they're already out there, so I'm either ignoring them. Or we gotta come up with some policy that you guys want me to do.
Um, I I, Tim, Tim, I do think, just to answer the question, again, this isn't. Telling you that this is what the board should do, that's up to the board or to the mayor, really. Um, but yeah, I I think if that if it is, as long as the the statewide. Emergency is still in effect, the mayor has the authority to extend her executive orders as well. I mean, we've already, so so could that be extended to these establishments? Yes, I think so, at least for the time being. Um, you know, at some point that may end, so I wouldn't necessarily assume if it's the. Consensus of the board that, yeah, we should try to accommodate this even while we maybe try to consider tweaking the code. Um, that we shouldn't necessarily assume that we'll have all season to do that, because, you know, who knows when. The state may find.
And we gotta, we gotta reach out to the DOT and find out where they're at, because.
Yeah, I mean, and and and, yep, and right, and that's the other, I mean, because a lot of this, even if we wanna allow it and even if we have a. Like if they're in the state right away, our hands are really tied, we can't, you know, it's really up to DOT to tell them what. Allow and what they won't allow.
But that's what I mean, that's so, so does it even matter, if it's just the DOT's thing?
Well, I think it matters because I'm not convinced, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think it's necessarily the case that every. Establishment that's fronting Main Street in the village, that the, that I could be wrong, but I I I I. Am not confident or convinced that the state DOT right away goes right up to every building. Along the Main Street corridor.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Well, so, all right, I mean, so Tim, I guess if you wanted to do something here, I think the first thing would be determine what. You know, contact the DOT and find out what they are willing to accept and not accept, because then at a minimum. That will live, that will either open the aperture or narrow the aperture to the point where we know what we're focused on, right? If 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 they have, you know, specific criterion, but they're not prohibitive, then that's where we pick up the the ball.
Yeah.
But as a whole, it sounds, it sounds to me like all of you are on board with at least the idea of and not disallowing them altogether in our code.
I think it adds to the vitality and appearance of the neighborhood, I mean, as long as it's done tastefully. Why, you know, why would we say?
Visually, it's a plus.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost, almost like a calming feature too, when you see people sitting out there, you know, rather than just empty sidewalks. I mean, I I like it.
Yeah, it adds color and vitality, there's no reason, so.
So the only thing then, Tim, is again, get back to the SLA issue, so if if any of these places are licensed, you know, for alcohol. And and they are gonna be on the, you know, and again, putting aside the DOT issue for right now. But if they're on the public right of way, whether it's ours, well, if it's ours. Um, we should be checking with them to see, because they are obligated, if 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 they're exercising that right under these temporary extension. Policy that SLA has, if they're on municipal property, they do need to, we do need this municipal form. That we also need to sign, uh and they need to submit to SLA as well, so we should, I don't know if any of these places are. Serve alcohol or not, but I guess we should, that's the other thing you have to sort of.
The Volios is the latest one to ask about it, they wanna put some tables up, now theirs will not be on their property, those, theirs will for sure be on the state right away. But they do serve alcohol, so theirs might be the first one to really trigger that.
Um, yeah, although if again, if it's DOT right away, I mean, it's an interesting question because the SLA form doesn't really contemplate that, but. But, you know, I don't think we can't create, because what the municipal form really is doing is granting an easement, you're you're, we're letting SLA know. That we've essentially granted them an easement to do that, but obviously, we can't grant an easement over DOT's property.
Right, yeah, I mean, I know it's all kind of screwy, I just.
Yep.
Standard, we wanna just disallow those altogether, though, it would be easier for me to just say, you guys can't do this on the on the sidewalk. But again, I think it's one of those things that most people are on board with, but it's just, it's that situation between the DOT and the village. Um, yeah, so I'll look into what the DOT and see what I can find out. You know, and if it's not a property line issue, you know, if it's on their property, I guess. We'll just let it go. But I think if if it's on their property and they want to do it, don't we still need to at some point tweak the code?
I I mean, looking at it, I I mean, if if that's the sort of thing we want to allow. I do think we probably need to tweak the code because frankly, I think if you, if if. If if somebody goes in, even forget about this executive order ability, but they they actually go in and seek approval. Under our design standards, looks like it's gonna be pretty hard to get a traditional sidewalk. Uh, cafe type of arrangement approved.
That's, that's why I ran into the roadblock though, because if I make them go to planning board, they're just gonna deny it. You have some pretty clear examples of it being inappropriate.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one thing we might consider is is to not, you know, I can understand, like I said, I can understand the. The DOT barrier and and stuff sort of in the, and and this is where most of ours have been kind of been set up in parking lots. Um, or, you know, where cars are coming in straight towards those areas. But it does seem to me that it, we we could draw a distinction. Again, it's not my position to say whether this is the right policy or not. But but I could see the logic of having a lesser, you know, different requirements. If, you know, fronting a a street rather than fronting a parking lot.
I mean, it is not, it is not without precedent that a vehicle can go awry and top the curb. Run into the front building. It has happened on Main Street several times. Though typically it happens the most where there is no parallel parking between the driveway and the curb. Or where that parking exists, but no cars are parked there. So like, there's an example that where the, where the HRSB building was hit like a year or two ago, but it was at night. And there was, there was no parking on the curbside at that point. You know, the mosey was hit during construction. There was a glancing blow and actually went through the front of the building. There's no parking in front of the mosey. So I mean, maybe it's one of those things where if we're gonna, if we're going to vet the idea of sidewalk seating. And in doing so, forego the traffic barriers because the traffic is predominantly paralleled seating, parallel to the front of the building. And it can only be done where there is, you know, where it's allowed to have parallel parking at the curb because the car becomes the barrier. Something like those ones, you know. And there are instances where there is no parking on Main Street that that unfortunate restaurateur would not be allowed to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess I'll check with DOT first and maybe I'll just come, I'll send you guys an email or proposal or something. Once I get those details, that way we could just not judge your feelings on any kind of, are on board with it. I'll pursue it a little further then and talk to them first and then come back to you.
Okay, that sounds great, Tim. Thank you for joining us tonight and on this. Okay. Great, so let's see. Okay, do, um, I'm just gonna jump around a little bit. Meeting House, I just gave a quick update on that. So I think I'm done with number four, unless there's other questions. Uh, old business, the Los Robos water issue and the Natale development that easement. I know Chip Matt had a comment on that.
Yep, and he and he was absolutely right. I, you know, I did not explain that as clearly as I should have, Vince, my partner who drafted that. So actually Vince, I I actually had a meeting out of the office today, which was the unusual. But um, but while I was out, Vince did send a revision that I just haven't had a chance to look at yet. But I I I think he addressed all those points that that Matt pointed out. Um, so I'll take a look at that and I'll forward that. And if it all looks good, then we'll we'll forward it to the attorneys and see where we go from there.
Good. And he was just saying, you got that. Okay, so good. So that's moving in the right direction. Um, Island Park events, we all have a letter in front of us about an event that is being discussed at Island Park. And Keaton, do you want to start the discussion?
Sure, yeah, I'll give, I'll give everybody a quick briefing. Um, and again, thanks to Captain Brown for for being here tonight. You'll see on the second page. Um, there is a, um, some dialogue from Captain Brown here regarding this event. So I'll start at the beginning. Last month, um, there was a woman named Ellen Crutadoria. Who wondered about the feasibility of holding an event. She has it listed on here and her initial conversation is nine twenty-five. It's actually, uh, been moved, her preferences for it to be on October second. Um, she wants it on a Saturday, uh, scratch the part where it says ten AM to eleven PM. She's, she is aware that she can only hold the event until ten PM. Um, the basic idea is that it's music, uh, mocha music and wine. And she wants to hold, uh, an all-day event featuring music. Um, mocha being coffee and wine and beer. So it 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 sounds like in the description that it would be a larger event than what we could do. Um, during old home days. Um, and it's a little bit different than old home days. Because, um, she's thinking, and and I've I've advised her to kind of go to the, go to the park and check out the layout. Because the footprint is a lot different now than it was, uh, last year because of the playground. And I did advise her also that when we hold old home days. Um, the the back of the island is reserved for the alcohol area under a large tent. And, you know, I I told her all of this, um, you know, I'm not sure where she stands on actually going to the park and taking a look for herself. She actually wanted to set up a meeting with maybe myself and Judy and Ben. But, uh, you know, I I said, you know, that's a little, you know, I I think you should check out the park yourself first and kind of go from there. So that was about a week and a half ago, at least, maybe two weeks. Um, I haven't spoken to her since because I, and then. Uh, at the end of that, I told her that I would bring it to the board and the board would kind of review everything and go from there. Um, it is a, uh, as I mentioned, it is a large event that she wants to plan. Um, she'd be looking at thousands of people, possibly three to five thousand people. Um, and you're looking at eight to ten different local and national bands. She told me that she reached out to Rennelly Merchants, um, the press and publicity people. Um, to see if she could get a national headliner, uh, Nelly Merchant is of the ten thousand maniacs for those who aren't aware. Um, so given all this, uh, I did forward this to Captain Brown. And Captain Brown had a lot of, uh, concerns, which, you know, obviously, you know, when Judy and I were talking, we we shared them also. And we wanted to bring this to you guys. Um, you know, as as Captain Brown mentions here, you know, they're gonna need a license from the liquor authority, um, adequate security. And it can't be MR's police officers because they're not permitted by law or an event that sells alcohol. You know, um, she wasn't aware of that. Um, I did make Ellen aware of that. Um, and I told her that we would need a a site plan also, uh, which Captain Brown recommended. So I guess there's a little bit of a briefing on that. Um, you know, I I I know the board did read through this, um, prior to Dave's arrival as a trustee. Um, what are the board's thoughts as of what, as of right now? Um, where do we go from here? How do we? How do we tell her? Uh, what to do?
So in addition to all the other things that you just listed with an event this size, you know, COVID aside for a second. They would also have to be filing, uh, emergency preparedness plan with Rick Semannic.
Which Captain Brown addressed.
Just, you know, at that, that order of magnitude is, you know, Glen Park Art Festival scale. Right? Now, I mean, the second issue, of course, then is not putting it aside. It's the fact that right now you're allowed to have like a hundred and seventy-five people as a large event, even outdoors. You know, by current state rules. I mean, the Glen, the the Williamsville Foundation right now is struggling with whether or not to go no-go on the art festival. Because if they were going to follow the protocols. It would be madness. I mean, the the just controlling the flow of people, the number of people at any one time, the.
This, this has been my main concern is just one entrance and. And you're talking, you know, you're not talking thousands of people throughout the day. You're talking a possibility of a thousand people.
Accumulating.
Accumulating at a time.
Right, yeah. I mean, at least with the art festival, it's a flow-through event, right? This, they're going in, I mean theoretically, you're, it's a, it's a music festival. You're staying for band A and then band B, right? I mean, theoretically, again, we're the. We're the landlord, not the the event planner, right? So it's not the burden, we've kind of made it clear that the burden does not fall to us to lease these things. But on the other hand, I mean, they're walking in the door saying, we want to put three thousand people in your park.
Right.
I I think we'd be hard pressed to justify that if you're kind of helping knocking.
So to that end, and and I think I mentioned this to you, Keaton, so two things. Um, I am not, you know, comfortable signing any mayor's permit until we get the COVID waiver. And I know Chip, you're working on that. Um, Keaton, I know you sent over what we currently have people file out to rent a shelter. Or rent the meeting house. Um, but I I really, we we need to have that in place for for everybody's protection. Um, as far as the village is concerned.
And and, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, I I just, and and just one other point, and, you know, certainly, as Captain Brown says in this email. You know, I, today, the answer is no for this event. Um, and unless somebody knows something I don't about the future and everything opening wide up. It it sounds like they're gonna need some lead time to organize this event. And, you know, how, and I think it's the same thing you're struggling with the Glen Park Arts Festival, right? You know, it takes time to plan these big events. So if they're looking for an answer today, then today the answer is no. Um, we're not, I'm not comfortable signing off on that. And, uh.
And I guess that doesn't, that doesn't stop them from planning the event.
No, it's, it certainly doesn't stop them because if things change and open up drastically between now and October second, then that's what happens. But I I just don't want to give anyone, because I know there's a lot of work involved in planning any big event. And I just don't want to give ever, anyone a false sense of, well, we started planning it, it's in motion, it's gonna happen. Because I I don't, I can't make that guarantee. I don't think anyone sitting here tonight can. So that's.
Is is there a drop dead point that, um, a person would have to have a mayor's permit signed? Like, no, they could do it Friday, October first, and then the event's on the second.
We'd like, you know, weeks, you way at least. Yeah, then I mean, basically.
Emergency preparedness plan has to be in place eight weeks before the event.
Right, okay, all right. I was just wondering, because I didn't, I wouldn't want her to wait until the last minute. And, you know, you're like dropping this on our desks, you know, till the week of.
So that's a good point. What trustee you two just brought up about the eight weeks. You know, so if it's, it's an event that they can plan in eight weeks, that maybe should be the direction that they're heading in. And then eight weeks prior to the October second. But I think right now it's just way too premature to. To ask for us to give them an answer, certainly.
And I was, when I first heard about this, it was reminiscent of when I was on the Board of Trustees at the Hammer's Museum. But there was, and this was during the time that when the town had just begun to back off making that a town department. So we're, the whole Board of Trustees were looking for ways to generate revenue. And somebody had a great idea, one of the board members, shall remain nameless. Um, wanted to have a jazz festival. And he was talking about same thing, multiple bands, all day long, rides on the grounds of the Hammer's Museum. Now, I can't see a Ferris wheel, you know, on a tunnel on a green road. Anyway, this is what it reminds me of. There's so many moving parts to this that. I I don't know how you could pull it off, even without COVID.
So does that give you?
The other comment is, the Jolly Boys tried doing a couple of things in in late September, several years ago now. But, um, and 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 even the taste of Williamsville. That something like this could be, become a disaster if the weather's not cooperating. And and this is a change of season period that that I I'd be hesitant. Uh, just because of what damage could have to the island park itself, just the grounds.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I I think we're all in a a position where we'd love to tell her yes, but we just.
What is the occupancy of Island Park? Because I know that has come up before about how big it has been. Are you willing to kind of take on there?
Do you have it?
I had no idea.
Tim, Tim has a, had a formula that he was gonna develop, but he needed more of a a narrowed down attendance rather than three to five. Um, so I can have him do that, just do the formula for five thousand.
Well, what's our guess? Like when we host old home days, I I would say that that's a capacity. That's a perk. So what do you think?
Well, we 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 were talking about this to the Jolly Boys and and, uh. We may well have, um, the event, the rides, but not the beer tent. Only because how how do you keep social distancing in in a beer tent? Um, and even though we we could try to spread it out, is there a good two plus acres behind on the pavilion? But but it's just practically impossible to to, um, keep the social distancing. Uh, in in that kind of a situation. So if we have anything, it'll probably be the rides without a beer tent this year.
I mean, how many people do you think come to that beer tent out of a terrific, outstanding, highly attended year? You're talking maybe six, seven hundred at at peak time back there.
I think it's more than seven hundred.
More than seven, yeah. I mean, it's usually never a thousand. I wouldn't say.
Maybe not, maybe not the same time.
At the same time, correct. She's talking minimum three thousand. So you're tripling that number for the entire island is problematic. Not to mention what the neighbors would probably think too of the all-day event. And I know they're not usually happy. We get multiple complaints during the Oktoberfest, which I haven't heard much about this year either. I'm assuming that's not a go. Um, can't imagine it would go over.
Yeah, the other concern was, you know, we, you know, uh, right away, you and I, we talked about it, you know, we can't shut down that park to the public.
Right.
There might be people who want to just walk around or go to the playground. And then all of a sudden, they're literally in the middle of an event. It's not like old home days where there's a, you know, a little bit of a. Uh, you know, all all of a sudden you're in the rides, you know, there's some progression, you know, uh, you'd be ready to think of the, think of things.
Could we perhaps direct them to a park, maybe somewhere else in Western New York that might have a better?
I I mean, I.
Just go somewhere else.
No, I I'm trying to be helpful here. I really am. I, you know, I'm just thinking of something that maybe doesn't have.
I I really think that our venue is great, but not necessarily for this particular.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it's, it's more, you know, with the larger play area now and, um, the size of the. But, you know, we can't close it off to the general public. I'm just wondering, is there maybe somewhere else that might be, they haven't thought of or aren't familiar with it? We could just be helpful with and say, you know, maybe this could be an option for you.
To me, it's kind of like holding a wedding party of fifty people on a little rowboat, you know, there's only so much room.
That's what they try doing. I mean, at Canal Side, that's like a a small concert at Canal Side. And look at the space they have there.
Well, and that's my point too, what Captain Brown just said, you know, maybe the Canal Side is a better place for that. Or maybe just a larger park area that isn't an island, right? Because there's only so much room and then you're in the creek at that point.
You have egress issues. If something, God forbid, happens on that island, how do you get help there? How do you get people off of that island? And it's always something we struggle with during old home days. It's not to that magnitude, it's density.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I just don't, not to, we're trying to, I'm sure, discourage people.
No, and I'm not.
It's just not appropriate venue for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that that's great, hearing that too from Captain Brown. And I I pretty much feel the same way. And it's, it's not an appropriate venue, perhaps, for that size of a, of a crowd.
Perfect, I'll go back to her with that.
For a lot of the events this year, and I don't know how much you guys have, they're starting to get little, um, requests from from various races and all that. So smaller the better, like as they're trying to do with schools, you're trying to slowly open up schools, restaurants, everything like that. This should be the same way with with the the races. And I mean, I just don't see how a five K, how you can truly control that. I know they've tried doing it with, um. The one, the Shamrock, Shamrock. Yeah, and it's just, it's all spread out. It's, it's one thing if you have that much dedicated space and and people to shut down those roads. But you shut down Main Street or their roads for an all-day event to run a five K. And again, that's a huge inconvenience for some people. but you shut down Main Street or their roads for an all-day event to run a five K, and then, again, that's a huge inconvenience for some people, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much, everybody, I'll get back to her. Um, it's nice having a meeting recorded, so I can point this out to her and whatever.
Alright, well, I wish them luck, it sounds like a great advantage, just, it's unfortunate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, with everything, so let's take, I know we're past, um, seven thirty, let's just take like a quick three-minute break, and we'll get started with the board meeting. Okay. Like NASA.
I know, it's crazy. Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Alright, I want to welcome everyone to the Village of Willsville Board Meeting for April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. And I would like to call to order with a pledge of allegiance, led by our newest member of our village board, trustee David Sherman.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the reigning justice for all.
Administrator Kendrick, would you do the little call, please?
Yes, Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Cleon.
Here.
Trustee Sherman.
Here.
Trustee Ete.
Here.
Trustee Tori.
She's, she's here, but she's on, but she may not. It's, it's my understanding that she's on, but she may not be participating, so I don't know how you are.
Attorney Rico.
Chip? Here, here.
Deputy, DPW General Curche Villanen.
I'm here on Zoom.
Deputy Treasurer Pasco.
Here.
Director of Community Development, Abreis.
Here.
Okay, thank you, uh, we have no proclamations this evening, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Rego meeting held on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, your public hearings this evening. And we'll move into the suspension of rules for public participation. So at this time, if you have a question or a comment, um, as it pertains to the Village of Williamsville, we ask that you state your name and address, so I'll make a motion to open the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So if you're here this evening, you have something, uh, question or concern, if you could come up to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Sean Michael, I'm from fifty-four Garden Parkway. Um, up here for actually a couple reasons, I don't really think of it, but the first one is proposed, or actually, I think you may have voted for the dog park behind your house.
We, we voted, um, to, uh, your go in twenty nineteen to, to reserve that area for the dog park. But we haven't, nothing's been officially, uh, we haven't moved on anything officially.
Well, I've talked into some neighbors, um, and I know there's another group that may have emailed or commented here in the past, but like to just put my little bit in on this. Um, first of all, maybe I'm a little bit of a unique position due to the fact that our house is kind of raised, there're basement, you know, six feet of public, uh, ground, so our deck, you can see right over our six-foot privacy fence, so anything that goes back there, we have two dogs currently. Every time we let our dog out there, if there's another dog running around back there, it's just gonna be yep, 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 yep. Let alone other dogs playing with each other, they're not always the quietest, so. Uh, due to COVID, my wife is home, my dogs are there, but there's dogs in the back, if they hear all that back there, they're gonna bark constantly. Alright, and there's nothing she can be able to do to quiet them, and I'm sure this is for other people in the area too. I know on the last house in the village, it's tip of the triangle, I know everybody going towards Main Street, north from there, they all have dogs. Um, uh, so I'm, I'm sure this is something that everybody's concerned about. Um, also, you know, I'm third generation at this house, we've owned it since ninety-nine. Um, and I remember distinctly, when I was a kid, we would do a couple different things in the woods, build forts, dig up treasures, because back in the day, there wasn't a, a disposal service, there wasn't a garbage collections. Everybody threw their trash back, we dug it up, buried it, I found bottles that looked like they're from syringes, from the old days, there's all kinds of brown medicine-type bottles. Who knows where people put their oil back on, uh, who knows what came out of the railroad back then, Lehigh Railroad? Um, so, um, I would be concerned about exactly what's in that ground and having people come into the center of it and, you know, play with their dogs, so, also. Uh, right now, there's, there's mosquitoes back there, we all know there's mosquitoes, there're puddles here and there. That's gonna lead to a possible transmission from other people's dogs, such things such as heartworm, to a dog that might not be protected, there are feral cats around, so they may get, uh, infected by other things. And, um, it's, it's just does not seem the right thing to do. As a dog owner, I can see where this might be attracted to other people in the village, and even try bring people in from the town, which have nothing to do with the village, but I just think that we're gonna be inviting more problems, uh, into, in there than, than, uh, what we're gonna gain from a couple things, is smell, who's gonna pick up every day, who's not gonna pick up? You know, who's gonna leave their trash there, where's your cup, cup's gonna go, who's gonna empty out the trash all the time? Uh, we already have a great, great deal of people walking down the path, uh, that's great, but, you know, we're also adding a whole lot more families in some apartments, whether or not they're gonna be pet-friendly or not, I don't know. But, um, I just don't think that anybody who would like to enjoy this park would like to have it in their backyard. So my question is, why should we get stuck with? If we're in a business area, it's one thing, but this is residential, now there's a whole nother line of vampires, people, I don't know who has dogs on the other side, on the, um, south side of the property, but as far as the west side goes, pretty much everybody does. Yeah, it's bad enough that some of those people were at the tip, so we don't, not gonna get it as much, are now gonna have people looking down on them when they're in their backyard doing whatever they want with all the, knowing what they want, so. I would just like to say, I'd like to put my, my, um, thought in on that, and I would hope that you guys would consider the people that live there, not just the people that wanna let their dogs loose. Some people already do come back there, let their dogs loose, but it's real quick, the dogs usually run around the woods real quick, and then scurry back to the path, and they go away, but, you know, those are pretty much well-trained dogs, you don't know what a dog's gonna do either, I mean, you could have the friendliest dog, but for some reason, another dog gets tired, and you don't know which one it is. There's potential for fights, there's a potential for injuries from people trying to break them up too. Um, so there's a, there's a lot of negatives. Um. Um. Hush, now, now I totally kind of forgot what else I was gonna say. Um, as far as the meeting house goes, this was kind of, I heard a little bit of the rumblings. Um, I did see in your little pamphlet or flyer about possibility of selling it to Amherst. But I wanna say, if we're not gonna get taxes out of Amherst for having that as opposed to a private sale, I would much rather have that be bought by someone privately, because that is, uh, more of a tax role, which is probably why we're building all those apartments over, because over where we are, because the fact of the matter is, you can't put a whole lot of homes up in Amherst, and things are, or Williamsville, things are costing more, and we need more revenue. So I understand that's probably why that happens, cause that's about the only thing that we can do right now, is to raise revenue, I would say, as far as property taxes, so. I, I definitely don't wanna have a one-time sale, and then not receive anything else down the line from it, so. Um, I'd rather, like you, maybe you were talking about the youth use of it, maybe loan it for that reason to Amherst, but they have to also pay us a little something to help, you know, with the maintenance. So, I mean, that would be a much better deal, I believe, than selling it, it's like, I believe, uh, Matt, um, said, dollars and cents, you know, I don't think it makes much, um, money, giving it to, or selling it one time to the town, so. Uh, and I think that's pretty much it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate them. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Mary Loether, one twenty North Allocutt Street. Um, first of all, welcome, Dave, it's good to see all of you again after over a year. Other than Matt, we see Matt, or hear from Matt regularly, uh, HPC, no, no, that's a good thing, that's a good thing. Um. I didn't plan to comment on the dog park, but, um, I'm friends with Nancy and Bob Lutag. Bob just passed away not too long ago, but their house backs right up to where the dog park would be as well. And I know they are not in favor of it. Um, the one spot I always thought would be good for a dog park would be the very end of the island park, because it wouldn't impact neighbors, it could be fenced in, it would keep the kids from going back there, who all go back there now and smoke and drink, um, so it'd probably be a good spot to put it at the, the base of the island. Um, dogs are already allowed on the island, and plus you've got the water there, it's much more scenic, I think, than the trail, and frankly, a lot of people are afraid of dogs. Um, when you have, I know we have a lot of dogs on the trail now, walking with people, but think about that, that might be a good spot. Um, the reason I did come tonight was because I do have questions about the meeting house, and I wondered what the standing was on the meeting house.
Sure, um, so I, uh, I spoke with Supervisor Colvin today, uh, to try to get an update, because I knew we were having a board meeting, and I, I figured there would be some questions. Um, the town is interested, um, they, we've sent over all of the paperwork that we've been able to uncover regarding historic covenants and so forth, over to the town attorney. Um, so they're combing through all of those documents as we speak, and, um, they, uh, the youth and recreation department would have some programming usage, uh, uses that they could utilize at, at that building, and I believe the next step would be, um, you know, after they look, give, giving them more time to go through the documents, and then figuring out, you know, where we're gonna be with next steps and a possible agreement. So I, I don't have much more than that, I'm hoping to have more information on our April twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, the attorney who was looking over those documents, I think, was out of the office for a while, so he really, I, I don't have anything more concrete than that to offer at this point, just that there is definitely an interest.
What are the covenants? I understand there's some pretty funky things attached to it.
Yeah, so let me, I have a whole big folder here started on this, um, I, you know, Chip, if you're on, if you wanna answer that, and, or I can look here, and.
Sure, so there's a couple different covenants, uh, one is, there's a preservation covenant that, um, came along with some grant money, um, two thousand and seven. Um, but, uh, actually, it's not clear that that covenant is still necessarily in effect. But the other thing about that is, I mean, essentially, what it requires is that any alterations to the property, um, be consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards, as you would expect. Um, and as HPC would probably require anyway. Um, and, but also that if the preservation covenant is still in effect, in addition to any approvals that might be required from HPC, um, the shipos approval would be required. The reason why I say it's unclear is to whether that's still in effect, because that preservation covenant was, by its terms, the term of that covenant was ten years, so we're beyond ten years, or the useful life of the improvements, uh, which the agreement doesn't, which the covenant itself doesn't unfortunately define. So, um. unfortunately define, so, um, that is the question, I think, as to whether or not the, what, what the useful life of the improvements from that grant were. But, so that's the preservation covenant. The deed into the village also contained a number of covenants or restrictions. Um, one of which was that the village would promptly seek to have the property listed on the state national register of historic places and to seek its landmarking, both of which have happened. Um, there was also a requirement to put some plaque on the property. And the one that I suppose you could describe as funky is that that a usable portion, that's all it says, a usable portion of the interior of the structure be set aside for non-denominational worship. Um, and I'm sorry, meditation.
Yeah, of non-sectarian religious worship, meditation and related activities. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Right, so what exactly that means? You know, don't know. But anyway, so those are, those are the three of strings that came with the deed from the religious society, uh, who sold it for a dollar to, to the village.
There was no monetary recon, um, no monetary thing that went back to the disciples of Christ sect?
Oh, so there is.
There's a reverter clause.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so there there, there's a reverter clause that if, if the covenants were not implied with uh, the property would revert.
To and become the property of the New York Christian Missionary Society or its successor.
Ri- right, but to be very clear, it's not, and, and then what they would have to do under that clause, under that, uh, agreement by which they transfer the property is to then sell it. And then there's a formula for how the proceeds of that sale would be distributed between them and the village.
So any monies received for the sale of the building, a portion of it would go back to disciples of Christ or the society?
The, the, the other way around, frankly. I mean, if, if it were to revert to disciples. Doesn't, it doesn't exist any longer. Uh, the New York Christian Missionary Society, which also does not exist, but has a successor. Uh, they would have to sell it. And they would then get to keep a certain part of the proceeds of that sale and the village would get to keep portion of proceeds of sale. There is nothing in the deed into the village that would require the village to pay money over to the New York Christian Missionary Society or its successor upon the sale of the property unless the covenants were not complied with, in which case it would revert to them. And again, they would sell it, so. So no, there, there, so there's no prohibition on the village selling it and there's no, there's nothing on the face or the terms of that agreement that would require the village to give a portion of the sale proceeds to the society's success.
It, it's all, just to be clear, is that the reverter clause is only triggered if those three covenants are
If they're not compliant.
Are not complied by, by whomever the owner is.
Correct.
Right, so, so what exactly it says is the deed to the village will contain a reverter clause, which will provide in substance that if the above conditions are not complied with by the village, and those were the ones that we talked about, the plaque marker, the certain, um, percentage of usable space for non-sectarian religious wor- uh, worship, if they're not complied with, um, by the village, the church building and road property will refer to and become the property of the New York Christian Missionary Society or its successor. And as Chip said, there's no, the New York Christian Missionary Society no longer exists. However, I believe we may have uncovered a successor.
I know the disciples of Christ are still an active sect. Um, they have a, a church in Chikwaga and they have a church in Niagara Falls, so. I don't know. I don't know. They all come under a bishop and everything else, so I don't know how that works.
And I think Chip's.
So, the Williams Hill Christian Church, which was the, the denomination that last operated and owned that structure as a church.
Okay.
Has dissolved. They dissolved and they transferred that property to the New York Christian Missionary Society, which actually was the entity that transferred the meeting house to the village. Um, and that organization itself has also been dissolved. But it does have a successor that may in fact be related to those other disciples of Christ. Denomination.
All right, and who is the grant from that, um, maybe ten years?
Chip, oh, Chip, New York State.
The ship of grand?
Yeah.
Cause that didn't come into effect when we had the mill and we had ship of grants.
Sure did. There's preservation covenants on the mill.
Oh, okay, you're saying that they didn't have to be repaid on the mill?
Oh, yeah. No, 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 they did not have to be repaid, but the state did have to approve that transfer because that preservation covenant was clearly still in effect.
Okay, I see.
And, and so they had to approve, they, they had to approve that, that, um, the transfer of the mill and they did not, and they approved it and they did not require the village to repay any of the money that that they, state money that had been used to restore the mill.
Okay, well, in my research on the meeting house, um, I talked to the town about the assessed valuation. And the assessed valuation of that building is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And it's also listed as fifty-six, fifty-six Main Street on the town records.
Yeah, there's two, it's confusing. There's, there's two addresses that we're uncovering, one's fifty-six, fifty-six and one's fifty-six, fifty-eight. Um, it's been referred to both ways, you know, so if I look at this document from nineteen seventy-nine, which has the, um, the deed restrictions here, and I think you may actually have a copy of this too. If not, I mean, I can certainly get you one. But, um, they refer to it as, uh, what is it, fifteen? So in here is fifty-six, fifty-six Main Street.
Right.
Maybe this is the actual deed, you know, so.
Originally, there was one market on the corner of Maiden Mill and then the meeting house. And then when that was torn down, Rogers Market burned, I think, and then they tore it down and they built Sorrentino's and then they built the other building with the Village Grill and the
Right.
The jeweler or coin guy, whatever it is. And I think they must have shuffled the numbers around. Because I couldn't find it online when I was looking it up, so I had to call there and find out what was going on. So there are the two different numbers, but it leads me to a thought that that building is appraised now at four hundred and forty thousand dollars and its assessed valuation is a hundred and seventy. And it goes back to what I've been saying for years, that Main Street is grossly under assessed. And by having Main Street so un- under assessed, the residents are carrying load. And that's one of the reasons, I think, why some of our assessments, I mean, our assessments are high because this is desirable property. But I think that the tax load isn't fairly distributed. And I really think the village should be talking to the town assessor who we hired to do our assessing. And we should be talking to them about why we aren't properly assessing Main Street businesses. Every business that's sold on Main Street has sold for hundreds of thousands of dollars more than it's been assessed at. And I go back to fifty-five hundred Main Street, which is huge. I mean, it was literally millions. So I think it's incumbent on this village board to go back to the town and have them take a look at Main Street. And I realize we wanna maintain a friendly business district and everything else, and I totally agree with that. But they should be carrying their fair share. It shouldn't be put back on the residents and that's where it's going.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a very true statement and I will agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Um, but like Chip, how, how difficult is that to, I mean, I don't, I don't know how they formulate assessments, but so how difficult would that be to, you know, get that updated? Just that's, that's.
I mean, it's really, it depends how the town and how frequently the town does. I mean, the town, the assessors are obligated by New York State law to, to it, to assess properties. You know, I don't know exactly what methodology they're using over there, but, but the idea, although it's frequently as Mary, I think, points out, I mean, oftentimes there's not a match, but it's supposed to reflect the real, you know, some relation to the real market value of the property. Now, the other thing you have to keep in mind, again, we don't control the process that, that the town assessor does and the town assessor exercises her authority independently. Um, and there's a process to, to, to challenge that and, and some, and I have no idea what happened with fifty-five hundred or any other property because again, we're not involved in that process directly. Um, but, you know, oftentimes commercial property owners are pretty aggressive about challenging their assessments and there's a process by which they can do that and um, you know, so I, it, it's just, but I'm expecting, because I, I'm just guessing that if we, if we ask the town about what's going on, I, I would expect they'd say, look, we're, we're doing the best that we can, but i- if some people think that those properties are under assessed, it's like, look, we tried to assess them at this, but then they challenged it and they won. Um, you know, either at the, at, at the administrative appeal level or going to court. Um, I have no idea whether that is the case with any of the properties that, you know, maybe we think are potentially under assessed, but it's, but, yeah, I, I, my point is it's not as simple that, uh, as necessarily as just asking the town assessor, hey, could please, you know, take a look at these assessments? I mean, we could certainly do that. Well, maybe it would make sense to have a, to ask to have, maybe ask the town assessor about.
I, I agree that the attorneys, many of them are on staff and they will fight it. However, I think that, um, in the past, I know the town has gone and done certain sections of the town.
Yep.
When they haven't done the whole town, they've done sections.
Yep.
And it certainly wouldn't hurt to have them do Main Street.
Yeah, I mean, I have no, I mean, Amherst is obviously a big town with lots of properties, so I don't know how frequently, I don't know if they ever do townwide reassessments or if they just, you know.
Yeah, they did three years ago.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
They did the entire town.
That was just sort of a uniform, like.
Right.
Lofted.
Right.
Uh, you know, I, it, it's also imperative to understand that, you know, assessment and appraisal are different.
I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah, um, but yeah, no, it's, it's a good comment and it's certainly worthy of the investigation.
A hundred and seventy thousand versus four hundred and forty is pretty.
Yeah, if you close the gap a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, and like I said.
Of course, we're not earning any property taxes from that one anyway, but, but the next one next door.
True. And there's several that we won't, because we've got several churches and nonprofits. However, I think that's something that the board, it's incumbent on the board, I think, to really take a look at that after seeing just this one example.
Yeah, but, but it, it's also, you know, and it's true, again, I have, don't know what the town is, how, how exactly they do it, but they also publicly own properties, maybe at the bottom of their list for doing reassessments because they're not collecting taxes on them.
Well, I think it certainly warrants asking the question. And, you know, it's funny, because ever since we began this discussion of potentially selling the meeting house, we've uncovered a lot of funky things as you, and, um, and, you know, here's just another one of them. So I think that if nothing else, uh, I'm not sure which di- which direction we're gonna end up as a board with the decision for the meeting house's future, but I can tell you that in the midst of all this, we can probably correct a lot of, uh, things that maybe have been overlooked and we can certainly have some transparent conversations that will maybe end up in the, to be a better outcome for everyone involved, so.
It's worth a conversation with the supervisor, I think, anyway.
Yeah, I'll definitely, well, I'll be speaking with him, um, you know, in the next few days, I would imagine, so I will definitely bring it up.
Okay, and the, the last thing is, next meeting, you have a public hearing for the Stonewall and Garrisoners.
Yes, we do.
And you're going to have more than seven people there if the HPC comes and if the residents come or anything else. So you might wanna consider having the meeting at the meeting house.
Um, we're actually gonna, the technology's an issue over there for us. Um, so what we're going to do is we will do, um, a sign up. We already know that, um, Mr. Rubino is the owner of the property that obviously he'll be here and I'm not sure if he's having, you know, another person as well, so we'll take that into consideration, but uh, quite, quite honestly, what we're gonna have to do is, you know, people may have to socially distance and wait in the hallway till we open up the public comment and they can come in, uh, one at a time to socially distance and speak and then they would have to exit and certainly could wait outside to hear, um, the outcome of that hearing. Uh, my hopes is that that can be something that this board feels comfortable voting on that night. Uh, for two reasons. The biggest reason is we don't have everybody come back, um, to hear the outcome of the vote, which encourages more gathering. And secondly, it's pretty much, uh, you know, there's, you, you know, the issue's gonna be presented in front of us, we're gonna hear both sides, and I think at that point, we should be capable of making a decision. So I'm hoping that it will just be for the evening. It may be a little uncomfortable. I know waiting in the hall, but we do have some seating out there and we'll try to apply additional seating, um, with some of these extra chairs if we need to, but.
This is, this is actually the third iteration of, of seating, if, uh, fifteen, if we need to.
Yeah.
Up to fifteen, oh, well, maybe that'll be enough.
So, um, and that does include, um, we need thirteen from the public and then there's, there would be one for, um, Amherst Police and another one. Generally, the, the Amherst B lately has been zooming, but if they, you know, if the press wants a seat, they can have a seat, so. Thirteen for the public, you know, and then you're minus two of that for the Rubinos, so, um, eleven from the public and we can have some overflow seating if we need to in the conference room.
Okay, yeah, so we'll make it work.
Does the electronic equipment we have at the meeting house, is it non-functional?
It's functional.
We don't get internet there. That's the issue and we're having live Zoom, so we really need to have that internet access. If we didn't need to Zoom the meetings, that may be an option for us, but because we wanna offer the Zoom, uh, we can't.
The, the setup there just wouldn't work out well.
Yeah.
The board needs to see people on television, so we would need to bring everything over there and get equipped with wifi, internet and all that, so, um, this is actually the best to allow the public to zoom in and hear everything. While the acoustics over there are good, um, they're more compressed here, which is actually better for zooming rather than having a large ceiling, um, where there's more of an echo, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much.
Good evening. My name's Tom Miss Frank.
How have you been?
Um, I've been good.
Here.
Where have you been?
Well, we've been here.
Really, I tell you, the door was locked.
Well, we can, we haven't been able, this is our first meeting that we've been able to get, uh, people in person since we shut down last March, so we've been just zooming, that's why.
I'm, I'm glad to be here. I've, um, um, I've been doing some homework on the Amher Central State Park. And, um, as far as the Allocut Creek, uh, the watershed, uh, connection, uh, as far as the relicensing of the Niagara Power Project, uh, through two thousand and fifty, you've got erosion, uh, along, uh, the walls. And if you look at the, um, original surveys of, um, um, Allocut, um, the ownership, uh, rights, title and interest used to go to the center of the creek and, um, um, they're calling, uh, just, just so you know, there's federal, uh, funding. Uh, so this has to go through the federal, the, um, state, the county, the town and, uh, the village as far as a um, a project, uh, for the Amher Central Park. Um, the watershed and the reason, um, when they did the relicensing of the Niagara Power Project, I don't know if you know Mark Maspreda. Uh, he's the head of, um, um, the New York Park Recreation and, um, you know, Tourism Department. Um, but he was, uh, with, uh, Wendell DeShirr and, um, uh, they were the contractors for, um, you know, as far as what was going on with, um, United States Army Corps of Engineers as far as the sinking house, houses in the town of Amherst. When I brought that up to the town board meeting, they, um, they took me out in handcuffs and had me arrested. Uh, because the town of Amherst is an elevated flood plain, is what they, they said, and that the extent of the damage, um, that they estimated, um, because every day the water, um, in Allocut or I'm sorry, in the Niagara, uh, it's not a river, the strait, uh, goes up and down about a foot and a half, but it affects the whole watershed. And they said that the extent of the damage over that fifty-year period was going to be like four hundred and seventy-nine million. And they said that the extent of the damage over that fifty-year period was going to be like four hundred and seventy-nine million dollars.
Okay, so let me, hold on, so it, it has to pertain to the village of Williamsville. Right, and a couple of points, I agree with you. Um, so with the erosion on the creek here that runs through.
And dead trees, don't forget.
That is something that we're looking into with the local waterfront revitalization plan. So we do have a team of folks and a consultant that are, you know, responsible for surveying that and looking at what work needs to be done. So.
And, and what, how to, how to proceed with funding for that.
Right.
Um, right.
You're, you're familiar with it, Wendy Salvani.
Uh, right, exactly, yeah.
So that's something we're working on here in the village, so.
Well, you know, as far as tying this in, um, really, when we went down for the walk, as far as the, the federal funding, um, or the state funding, um, really, that, um, the, the state park land goes from, um, uh, from Glen Avenue down to, uh, Sheridan Drive.
Right.
And you can't walk down there.
Okay, but that's the state park, that's, that's with Amherst.
Well, um, this is where, as far as, um, it used to be that the village of Williamsville and the town of Amherst boards, they would never, um, um, you know, have their meetings at the same time, what I'm suggesting. Now, because of the climate change and, um, the funding, that as far as all the inter-agency and, you know, all the bureaucratic, um, stuff that has involved, as far as bringing this, uh, how it ties into the education system and, uh, creates, uh, employment for young people. As far as the Mill Middle School and the North Forest Elementary School, as far as, um, you know, connecting it down there, um, you're going to be, uh, selling, um, the meeting house. They have, um, you know, the Bronstein Woods, you know, as far as, um, there are, um, as far as the International Chimney Company, Rick Lor, and, um, uh, the planning board, um, guy in the town of Amherst, what was, um, I forgot what his name was, um, Gillert, Eric Gillert. Uh, as far as taking down the chimney and, uh, as far as putting some sort of an adaptive reuse in there. Uh, as far as the Amherst, uh, Central State Park, uh, that would go all the way down to Town of Wanda Creek. See, the reason why they incorporated the village of Williamsville in eighteen fifty was to connect Eloquent Creek to the Erie Canal. Okay, now, the, um, the Erie Canal, um, was under the jurisdiction of the Throughway Authority. They, um, decided to cut their budget and they, um, turned it over, the, uh, the Erie Canal, they turned it over to the Niagara Power Project. Okay, that's, um, because this is all a part of the watershed and.
And, and Tom, I thank you for that history lesson. And I think that, um, we are understanding what you're wanting. And I think being in the village, we're doing our part, working with that LWRP plan.
Right, exactly.
What our needs are. And, and that's, at this point, really all that we can do as village representatives. So a lot of what you're talking about falls into the town of Amherst. And, uh, that would be something that they should be, and I'm sure are addressing.
Right, as far as.
So is there anything other that you want us as a village to do?
I mean, I don't play golf.
Well, I don't play golf either.
At the Westwood Pharmaceutical Country Club. You know, as far as, uh, what they're doing there, that, um, the.
Okay, but that's a, that's a town decision, so I'm, so I'm asking you.
Yeah, but you're, uh, look, they, um, the power authority, um, as far as the water, I think you, um, that, there used to be thirty water mills on Eloquent Creek. Evans, I think, had the original patent in like about seventeen ninety. Okay, and, uh, when they put in the power project, um, Springville and Williamsville, I think you had to, you can check your, um, historical records, had to sign a, um, an agreement not, not to, uh, generate electricity, uh, not to compete with the power project. They take that water and they convert it to electricity. And I think they generate like two billion dollars a year of revenue from the power project. But also, see, this is a part of the Canadian, the IJC, the International Joint Commission, that when they put in, uh, Eisenhower, when they put in, uh, the throughway, okay, and they took that all out with the power project money. Okay, that, um, it's, it's, uh, it's an agreement with the Canadian government as far as, um, the two power projects and, um, um, the, uh, the St. Lawrence Seaway. When they put in the St. Lawrence Seaway, the, um, Town of Wanda Creek, the Erie Canal no longer serves a useful purpose. But you have one of the most historic, uh, locations where the canal, uh, comes into Town of Wanda Creek in the whole country, and most people don't even know it's there. And there's a restaurant down there across from, um, Buffalo Niagara.
Right, so Tom, I'm just gonna tell you, so what would, what do you, what is your ask this evening for the village board?
Uh, putting together, um, a, a long-term project for the Amherst Central Park as far as, um, a component, as far as what they're calling for in the federal, uh, legislation, as far as the, um, uh, stimulant.
Okay, so I think that is something that you would, that would need to be addressed with the town or the.
Well, I, I presented it to yourself, it's, um, you can tell them I didn't say anything.
Okay, well, thank you for your history, I, I appreciate it and your thoughts.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to collaborating with you. I'm gonna put you on the advisory board of directors.
Oh, boy. Okay, all right, thank you so much, Tom, for coming this evening, it's good to see you.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Bye.
Is there anyone else who has any comments or questions? Do you have anything you wanted to add about the dog park?
Well.
State your name and address.
Yeah, so I'm Maureen Michael of Fifty-Four Garter Parkway. And, um, I was just thinking, if they put a dog park right there, nobody would be able to enjoy their backyard at all, and that's probably a pretty good reason why a lot of people purchased the house where they did, because it's rather private. You know, I can sit on my deck and I don't necessarily hear a whole lot, you know, going on. And I think if there's a dog park back there, it's just gonna be loud and uncomfortable for me to enjoy, you know, what I purchased and what I pay my taxes on.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Um, I do wanna discuss the dog park more. I have, um, I have it on my work session agenda, so as soon as we get through here, we'll hop back into that. And I wanted to give an update on that, so just that you can hang around for a little bit. Oh, yeah, yeah, actually, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So anybody, uh, who's on Zoom, now we've, um, taken our, our participants, uh, right before us. Who's on Zoom and would like to, uh, make some comments to the board, please use the raise your hand function. We'll give you a couple moments here. Still in the suspension of rules portion of the meeting. Is there anybody who is on Zoom who would, uh, like to speak to the board? Going once? Twice? All right.
No hands.
Okay, all right, so I will make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, getting right into reports and resolutions. Um, I will make a motion to approve resolutions number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, number six. Um, as they appear on the agenda, and Keaton, I know you're scrolling through them, those resolutions have to deal with a lot of budget amendments, um, budget, uh, transfers. And, uh, that's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. Okay, resolution number seven is in regard to the village budget. Whereas the tentative budget for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year has been duly represented to the village board by the budget officer. And a duly advertised public hearing has been held thereon. Now therefore be it resolved pursuant to section five dash five oh eight four of village law that the said tentative budget and the salaries and wages as stated in the salary schedule are hereby adopted for the village of Williamsville for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year as follows. General fund, equalization, water fund, sewer fund, Glen Park fund and debt service fund. And all of those amounts are listed up on the screen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Resolution number eight, resolved that the following department of public works equipment is hereby declared surplus to be sold via auction. And if you look there, we have four assets, um, that are listed, description and the original cost and book value. So be it further resolved that the DP double, DPW general crew chief is hereby authorized to advertise the equipment listed above for sale by auction.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And resolution number nine is resolved that the proposed increase from William Shutton Associates PC, the village's engineer of record, for additional engineering services, services related to the three-rig crosswalk at South Payuga Road and Milton Street is hereby approved in the amount of five thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's it for, um, resolutions for me this evening, um, and resolutions in general for the rest of the board. And, uh, I have no reports. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Piazza for his reports.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the article is concerned, they're, um, really looking forward to having something happen with the meeting house, but no specific plans, waiting to see what might happen in the, in the near, in our future. Um, other than that, uh, no other reports, no resolutions, so that's it for me.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, next for his reports is Trustee E. Two.
Uh, nothing, uh, extraordinary to report, um, just a quick rundown. So, uh, our planning board meeting, uh, was last week, Monday. It'll be again the first Monday of April, zoning board. As needed, would be possibly, potentially next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday, next month as well. I agree, those are always public meetings, everyone's always, well, encouraged to attend. Uh, historic preservation, uh, they have a meeting coming up on the twenty-seventh of this month. Uh, that's still gonna be on Zoom, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so that's available, that, all that.
I thought we moved it up a week.
That may be true. I'm just looking at my calendar and I.
I think we did.
Is that, is that the one in May?
April.
In April.
Oh.
Uh, I know the one in May got moved up a week.
I think it was the, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, so that's what I was gonna say, is that then the, the May, to get moved up, HPC is planning a, uh, a presentation of, uh, historic, of plaques to historic properties. That will be held at the mill, thanks, still works for that. But that'll be public, obviously. And then lastly is the parks, which meets this Wednesday. And we will be talking about, um, you know, capital projects that will be occurring in the next fiscal year, uh, including a substantial project that's in the office for South Lawn, which we'll talk about in work session in greater detail. Uh, that's it for me.
Okay, so, um, ZBA, do you need another alternate for that committee? Tim had mentioned that maybe it wouldn't hurt to have a second alternate, so in case one alternate needs.
We're gonna add two alternates. Uh, if, if we don't have a second alternate, yes, we need one. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure what our current roster is.
That's okay, you know, I, I just, um, and, and we'll look at that and then maybe just, uh, if anyone knows of anyone and, uh, and are not, maybe put something out on the website. So let, to maybe just make a note, let's double check that.
That was, that was something else I was gonna say too, is that, uh, looking a little forward, couple of months here, uh, we do have a village election coming up and then we will have reorg coming up after that. And so putting the call out now, anyone who's interested in getting involved in the village, any of the committees, that we have, there's a volunteer form online, you can sign up for any number of committees that you might be interested in. And then we'll get your reorg in the summer. We may tap you for one or multiple, uh, as volunteers needs are needed there. So, that's it.
Okay, and then the other thing I just wanna mention is, um, with the planning board, I just, uh, Tim Masters had brought up, um, and, you know, maybe an issue, I don't know if I wanna call it an issue. But, um, since we've been holding those meetings via Zoom, it is just a seven-member board. And we seem to be operating sometimes as a nine-member board and eight-member board by having, um, everybody who's present chime in on whatever topic's being discussed. And so I think that, you know, I don't wanna set a precedent by any means because if we were in person and we were up here, seven members.
You're all planning to not be participating.
Right, if these folks here were the two alternates, they would not be participating actively in the seven members who are seated. And I feel that the Zoom meetings should also, uh, mirror that type of operation. And so maybe it's, maybe it's just, it's up to the chairperson to kind of rein that in and control it. I'm not sure whose responsibility it is, but I'd like to see that done.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I'm not sure that we have.
It, it's really up to the planning board as to how they wanna operate for meetings. And I discussed that with them at that meeting. It's really not an issue for village board to determine how the planning board conducts its meetings so long as it's conducting its meetings, this is with the New York State law, which it is.
Well, it's not, I members and historically, when in the history of the village, has there ever been a planning board meeting where seven members are sitting here and two alternates are seated and they're having an active conversation with whoever's presenting in front? To my knowledge is, the answer is never. So I guess, I, I would just like to maybe keep that consistency. And I realize, you know, we're in a different world now with Zoom and it makes it easier for folks who are on the screen to chime in and will. But I think in order to remain professional and consistent, I think that that's the way that we should be operating. And I realize I, you know, I don't make a decision on how the planning board runs, I'm just offering that is, um, my thoughts.
Excellent.
Thank you, okay, um, that's all I had. Uh, next for her reports is Trustee Tori. I'm not sure if she's active, but we can maybe give her a moment if she is to.
If you want, I can, um.
Hi. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Wow, hanging in there, thank you very much. Reports, I would like to actually, uh, thank the Glen Park Joint Board, uh, for coming out on Saturday. They held their monthly meeting at the Noel Nature Center. And followed by the meeting, uh, we had four members grab rakes and start spring cleaning at Glen Park. So I wanna say thank you to all the volunteers who did come out on Saturday and, uh, give it a go, because it appears that we're gonna be meeting every Saturday from now on until, uh, the DPW gets to work again in the park. So thank you to the volunteers and, uh, no resolutions for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Tori, I hope you feel better soon, sooner or later.
Thanks.
And last for his reports is Trustee Sherman. And I realize he may not have any reports, but maybe some questions or anything you want clarification for that we've discussed tonight, and we've covered a lot of ground.
Well, you did, you have covered a lot of ground, yeah, you know, this is day four on the job for me, so. I'm still navigating the, uh, learning curve. But, uh, Keaton's been very helpful, we've all been very helpful and, uh, I'm looking forward to taking up the pace.
Great.
You've seen my Everest, right?
Do you have to scare him off? All right, uh, okay, so reports and resolutions, uh, any staff reports this evening? Just kind of.
Welcome to you.
Okay.
Um, I just had a, a couple of quick things, uh, saying the budget was approved. So, um, anybody might still have any questions on the budgets, welcome to go to the village website. And, uh, there's a, a quick, um, little budget briefs that I made so that, uh, people can, uh, familiarize themselves with, um, some good things. The tax rate's expected to go down, so, um, really, really good things they might wanna take a look at. Uh, the other thing is also a really good thing, um, and this, uh, falls under Dave's, um, liaison assignment. The Youth and Rec Department, or I'm sorry, the Youth and Rec Committee, rather, uh, had. Um, the youth and rec department, or I'm sorry, the youth and rec committee rather, uh, had held a uh Easter egg hunt with uh scavenger, scavenger hunt with uh paper Easter eggs that were hidden all along with the village. We had eighty-five entries and uh the youth and rec committee was only expecting maybe twenty, so it was a really, really um, it was a success, success and um, you know, they were hitting all over, they were hanging in trees, uh, they were near main streets, um, so it was a lot of fun. I saw a lot of people um on Facebook commenting and, you know, everybody with kids just had a blast, so.
Yeah, it was actually, it was so, so fun and so successful that I actually talked to Amy Alexander, who's the chair. And I mentioned to her, if if the committee was so inclined to maybe do a summer hunt, maybe with like um sunglasses or get creative with, you know, but I liked the idea of how they laminated them and put them throughout. And it might just be a nice thing to get people out walking in summer months when everything is live and green, you know, so.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's a flower.
Or a flower, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so it was really great, well done. Do you have anything else?
Oh, sorry, that is all for tonight.
Uh, Deputy Chancellor Pasco, keeping us all in line with uh signing the vouchers here, that's good. Um, Chip, do you have anything?
No. Not tonight.
Ben, Villanen?
No, nothing for the board, the meeting.
Okay. All right, uh, so staff reports, um, so Chip, I I have a question, um, for executive session. Just this evening, I think at about four thirty, um, I received a letter from one of our employees that warns us to go into executive session to discuss, to discuss the letter. So we, you know, we obviously, we have folks here live, um, and we could, you know, we're gonna need to do a breakout as well to have you in on the conversation. Uh, so how can we, can we get through, cuz I know there's some folks here who are interested in hearing um what we're talking about, the rest of work session, like, you know, so we have to close the doors and.
Yeah, I think you're, as a practical matter, I think the only thing you can do is ask everybody else to leave.
I got an idea, I got an idea, why don't, why don't I, I'll zoom in on my phone, right? And then we'll go to the conference room across the way and we can, I can join the breakout room.
Okay.
That's, that's a good idea.
Okay, that works, so um, and it, we shouldn't be in there long, so if you guys just wanna take a break and or, you know, just hang out, um, look at the pictures on the wall, the history. Um, we should hopefully be, I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes maybe, so.
Who um, who's in the breakout room, just uh Chip and then?
Just me and Chip.
Okay, all right.
Just, yeah, so Judy and the board, except with Matt, I need you all head over to the um across the hall.
I'm gonna take you with me, Chip.
Sounds good.
Was this your first meeting?
That's his first, yeah.
Twenty year, yeah, it's a, I have a good night.
You too, I'll see you later.
I will, yeah. Did you send an invite to Eileen?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Um, I'm trying to think of who it was. Um, it was Bill, um, a lot of them. There's a guy that was on the board and. No, 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 that uh.
That was just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Saying as far as um.
You know.
You know, the planning, um, the United States, our Corps of Engineers did the survey for the licenses.
Yeah, I was just wondering when you get, I don't remember.
And um, um, that uh, you know, fires, um, you know, all that land, they they shouldn't have put the university of Buffalo down there, they shouldn't have put it on the damn golf course. I mean, they're, 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 they got problems. Um, yes.
Do you have the idea, the concept of?
Yeah, the, the central park, and we're talking about a fifty million dollar capitalization.
You like the, you like the, the concept of the park?
Oh, yeah, I gave it to them.
I think the park is on, I think it does thing.
Um.
Maybe a jewel.
Well, I think, oh, um, the thing is um, um, from Main Street down to Sheridan Drive, you can't walk down there. Uh, where the Hodgson, uh.
Oh, I'm Sheridan Drive, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, gee, but that's all state property.
No, no, right, we go on the other, you know, the woods.
Yeah, and you know, as far as, um, see like Chief Duider, they got the Veracine Woods thing, which is an environmental education that's tied into the schools.
Oh, they're certainly, so that's cool. To, to make their own curriculum.
Well, the thing is, um, it's gotta be a part, see, um, they've got a, um, um, an engineer, a surveyor, okay, that, you know, that, um, you've got a, um, um, it's an enterprise project.
Sure.
Okay, and it goes through two thousand and fifty, okay, as far as the relicensing, yeah. See, they, they totally.
That's a lot, that's a power.
See, now, now, here's the thing, as far as the, look, the traffic on Main Street. Um, see, Allen Creek goes under the Amtrak station. Okay, it goes under the throwaway, goes under, um, um.
Goes under Main Street.
Um, yeah, it goes under Main Street, it goes under the, um, um, the, the electrical, um, highway.
Sure.
Um, and um then the trap, Main Street, the, the, it used to be an Indian Trail.
Right. It was a long time ago.
Right, yeah, but, 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 um, you know, and that's where the Niagara Stuck's falling. It has enormous historical significance.
Especially.
Um, really, yeah, yeah.
You got too loud, all right.
Okay, I didn't say anything.
We'll, we'll let them go their stuff though, okay?
All right.
We have a big guy, all right.
How bad, how bad is he going? It worked out down there? It worked out in the.
Oh, he's a. No, it's not that. Who does the truth, doesn't it? Blonde lady. She was tied to suit for a bunch of money.
Okay.
Nice lady, good old thing.
How's that?
She's a person, well, you know. Apple, okay, I'm just. So anyways, I can't get this on my thing, is that my?
I'm sorry, Tom, I have to ask you to stand back.
I will.
Well, no, I, I also need you to, I need you to take a seat, Tom.
Okay.
If you'll read, if you're seated, you can take your mask off, that's what the sign says.
No, Mark Masstrato.
No, I do not, I need you to sit down, Tom.
Okay, or Ken, uh, check him out.
Okay, will do, thank you.
He's the head of the, um, State Parks.
I need you to sit down, Tom, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, well, she's a monster. She's monsters and that's the momma, can't, she's got a bunch of babies. Yeah. What are you doing? Is that a joyous thing?
So.
Okay, um, sorry, the village recreation.
Yeah, I got it.
That's what I was really right here.
When I saw myself walking on the screen, I realized.
Still not done. This is weird, yeah.
Okay, we back up and recording?
Yes, we are here recording live.
Okay.
On mute.
Alright, so, uh, so we're finished with our executive session. Thank you for your patience. And I will make a motion at this point to adjourn the village board meeting for April 12th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's get right back into work session. Uh, I think we were, we were done then with the Island Park events. So the only thing I left, I have left to discuss is the Village Dog Park update. So, um, alright, so I sent out letters to all of the adjacent property owners. Obviously, you made, you guys made one of them. And, um, out of all of the letters that I sent out, um, I can't say I had any positive feedback. Uh, it was all, you know, not in favor of having the dog park. Um, I did just have one gentleman who called me and had a couple of questions about it. And, uh, I spoke with him about how we were anticipating doing a sixty foot buffer between the back property lines of the property owners on Garden Parkway and then the actual fence line for the dog park. And after speaking with him, he and his wife, they, they didn't really seem to have a problem with it. But they were the only ones, I think, and everyone else that I've heard from, you, you two included as well, have had some concerns and issues with the park going into that area. So, so one particular resident, um, I had been communicating with via email, Josette Hickey, um, she's a neighbor of yours. And I, I told her that I was going to print and read some of her comments that she had made to me about the dog park. And, um, one of the things she, she writes here is, uh, I do, I very much am in opposition of the location of the dog park. I do think the dog parks can be a great amenity to any neighborhood if it is done correctly and in the right location. I don't know what to do with the triangle space, but many meetings ago, you referenced the Griffin Sculpture Park. Maybe this triangular area is better suited for quiet sculpture parked with benches for residents and visitors to enjoy peacefully on the memory trail. So after I read this, um, and after I had spoken to several residents, and I know in the Strayer Kendrick has spoken to some as well, it kind of got me thinking about that, that area. And I do walk that trail usually daily if the weather's good. I have a small dog and I walk him down the trail. And, uh, I started to really just look at that area and envision, uh, something along these lines of just a more peaceful area, if you will, sort of like a nature preserve type area. Maybe having, um, a small path playing through there that people could just walk through the area itself, leaving the rest of it undisturbed. Maybe put a bench or two, um, you know, something along those lines. Maybe having some signage put out that talks a little bit about, um, maybe native plants or something kind of educational. So if children are walking through there, they can also, you know, stumble upon something in, in that way. So it's, it's just kind of a, a whole pivot of the direction that we had initially as a board discussed. And in conjunction with all of that, um, this board here didn't seem overwhelmingly supportive of the idea as well. The fencing was going to be a huge cost for us. Um, I think my lowest fencing price came in at around thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that was due to not so much the cost of fencing itself, but the prevailing wage that we would be required or the, you know, the contractor would be required to adhere to. So, you know, with all of that, um, trustee E2 has, um, you know, we have big plans for Picture of Parks 2025. And at our last board meeting, I think at one point, we agreed that maybe twenty-five thousand would be able to be put towards fencing the park area. That still wouldn't fully cover it. We would maybe need to do some type of volunteer build. So, so we quite had a lot of discussion at the last meeting. And, um, and then I've spoken to a lot of residents as well. So that's, you know, that's kind of the direction that I'm heading in. And I know maybe you're hearing this for the first time tonight about my pivot, my pivot on the whole park, dog park idea. But I wanted to, you know, discuss it in person and.
Yeah, I, I think. Mary's suggestion is, alright.
Well, and that's the other thing, right?
When I, when I think about that, um, you'd only need fence on one side because there's water on the other two sides.
No, you'd actually need it because when the creeks dry, there are people whose dogs do cross over into those backyards. So we would definitely need to fence somewhere, but that's not, I mean.
But even then, it creates more distance there from, from the houses. I, it, I suspect that, that that distance is what folks are concerned about. And, um, uh, because of the creek and because of the woods, I'm part of it back there. It would really only affect.
Nick Ross.
I don't think it would, it would affect any houses in Haunkeuka because of the bed jackers are so deep. Or if you already kind of include this yourself, but I don't know.
Why?
So the other side would have maybe three or four houses, um, across the creek. But because of the distance, they still wouldn't be as close as any of the folks who live close to where we're found.
Where's that, where's that way back also? I mean, my house is the furthest back out of all of the houses on Garden Parkway. I have that double, I have one in the front and one in the back. So, I mean, literally, like my husband said, I go out my backyard, I can see the trail when, you know, now, because there's no leaves on the trees. My dog, I wouldn't be able to let out of her if there was, you know, a dog park because she's always going to see that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I, Mary's point was interesting tonight. You know, and I, I'm interested to hear what, because trustee E2, you're with the, you know, Parks Committee. I really, I'm interested to hear your point, but, you know, it, it did get me thinking. And I also know that there's, um, a geese problem that we deal with. It seems at some point throughout the year on Island Park. So, um, maybe, you know, this would help deter some of that, maybe it wouldn't. But it's certainly maybe worth exploring. So what are your thoughts on that initially, what Mary suggested that was?
I'll talk to Parks about it on Wednesday. I'll take a look at the survey we have. And, you know, we were talking about a, about a half acre. So I mean, the first, the first part of feasibility will be whether or not they actually achieve that much square footage. Because it's, while there's a lot of property back there, it gets narrow really quick.
Kind of goes to a point like a triangle.
It does, right. And then a lot of people, and there is, there is like a little, there's a little thing down there. There's like, you know, you can go take a picture down there, kind of stuff. So there's a little, there's, there is some features down there that I think people wouldn't want to lose.
Could you still maintain access to that feature and maybe just not?
That's what I.
You could still walk around the fence and you could still get to that point.
Yeah, I just.
But then you would have.
Yeah, the, the big thing is, is, you know, what happens to the dog park? Does it become this crazy long carrot shaped, you know, thing?
Yeah.
Um, so I'll take a look at the survey. And the other thing too is, you know, the Build Home, Home Days puts the beer tent back there. So the question is, how much space are we chewing up from that?
We, we never go back that far.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, we, we have a, uh,
Well.
An RV we put behind the beer tent.
Yeah, well, going back that far, basically, I guess, the, the thing is that you may not go back that far, but to achieve a half acre, this, the dog park may have to come up that far. And, and so then there may be, it may be sort of trouble with the peanut butter. So I'll, I'll take a look at the survey tomorrow and I'll give you, I'll mark something up and send you a picture.
What do we assume the area was going to be?
About, about a half acre.
About a half acre. And I'm pretty sure that the area behind the pavilion is about two and a half acres. Um, I, don't quote me on that because I'm not real good at this though, but, um.
Okay, so.
Anyway, I think it's worth at least taking a look at.
Yeah, so I guess then to that point, I, I just want to say, so I, I'm curious before we end this discussion too, what your, my fellow board member's thoughts are on keeping that triangular area somewhat of, you know, a natural area, you know, for, um, in, in respects, maybe doing, like I said, a very simple path, some benches. Um, I was in, uh, out of state recently and I stumbled along a peace park, if you will. It was a very natural area and it was kind of, they had to have a say peace in all these different languages. There, it was very, um, meditative. There was like a little meditation spot, um, you know, something along those lines. And that got me thinking of, um, you know, something along that way, you know, so.
Well, I called the dogs before when they had the exercise equipment back there because there'd be eight guys and girls back there, ass and joints around, drinking beers. You would walk back the path and there'd be beer cans, bottles all over.
But I'm going to say, I think.
Because the cops can't necessarily see that when they ride down. They can shine a band, a light on the benches that are off the path to the clear sight. Once you step into the woods just a little bit.
Yeah.
But when people walk now, that on the path.
Oh, well.
No, 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 but when we first moved back there, I mean.
Yeah.
By the way, one, one thing to consider, um, if you needed to clean out a lot of that shrubbery, that's one of these ideal situations for an Eagle Scout project. Um, I know an Eagle Scout, uh, it was back late nineties, did, did some clearing of stuff along the pathway as part of his Eagle Scout project because I, I helped oversee it at the time. And, and I, I've read about various Eagle Scout projects and, and they, they all tend to be something of that nature. Where they, they, um, need to show their supervisory capabilities of bringing in young scouts to work with them, um, and doing that kind of thing without using a, a lot of heavy equipment, which I think they're not allowed to do because of their age.
Right, I mean, so.
Which is a thought, again, it's, it's a thought.
Yeah. No, I didn't say, it's a really good thought. I mean, I know that we, our crew, our Department of Works crew, I know, has to, um, get in there or will be hiring a company to get in there. There's some dead ash trees, um, that are hazard hogs regardless of what happens, you know. So you may see some activity over there for that. But, um, I don't, I mean, go ahead. Does somebody have a comment?
Yeah, it's Ben here. We, we will be getting in there to take out those ash tree this season. So I'd say, let's hold off on any kind of grand designs until we've really got an idea of what it looks like after that.
Right, right, absolutely, yeah. No, and I think you heard Basil's offer too, um, you know, for some of that underbrush and stuff. If we want to get that out, maybe it, we could look into getting an Eagle Scout group to help with that.
How, how far do you have control over, like all the way to the Amherst? Like, so, so you go up, just because one of the neighbors had thrown brush back there, I don't care sticks and stuff, I mean, you throw a stick, I mean, that's the whole, each, but like a pile, like.
Yeah, no, we, we have control, I mean, and obviously, you know, that's.
Well, we called last year and, you know, this brush pile is still there. And it's, I mean, it just happens to be rather tall, is like, you know, it just.
Well, I think once we get in there and take down some of the big trees and kind of look and see what we have left. And, um, but it is, I guess generally is this board prefer maybe the, you know, like a nature peace park idea area over a dog park area? At that location? Okay. Yeah, I, I know. Eileen, are, are you on? Do you have?
Yeah, I hear, no, I kind of like that idea, Deb.
Okay.
I do.
Yeah. I mean, I.
Go ahead.
No, I just, you know, it's, it's, it's good to, you know, put ideas out there and then sometimes, you know, get feedback and it steers you in another direction, so. So I think that's the direction we may head in and then draw something up.
But would you consider that as well as the tip of Island Park as a dock park? I mean, are we going to, thinking of two different things now or eliminate one?
No, I mean, I, I think, I think we could do things, you know, in tandem, certainly. I, I, you know, Ben's group, they're going to be in there this season addressing the dead trees and getting those down. And we can, at that point, see what that looks like. I don't anticipate having that area turned into kind of just what I explained, being a big monetary, um, you know, price tag with that.
Right.
So, you know, and depending where we are with the dog park, if that is something that might work as a location.
We'll see, yeah, I mean, I'll.
You can just see, I, I don't know.
I'll take it to committee and see what, you know, see what they say. And, and I'll take a look at the space that we have available and so.
I mean, because I, I ultimately, you know, I do believe that being that we're a walkable community, I think that having a dog park seems to fit in nicely with our whole mission of that. Because if most people that you see out walking, they're either walking with their children or they have a dog in hand or both. And, uh, I think it would be, you know, a nice amenity to add to one of our park spaces. I just think we need to find the right location for it. So, let's look into it and see what we have.
Sure.
See what happens. Okay, any other thoughts on the dog park or the triangular park at Lehigh from anyone? Okay, all right, Deputy Mayor Piazza? For Benny?
No, I'm, I'm, no, I'm just.
Then, okay, trustee E2?
Uh, sure, so, Chip. Did.
Yep.
Did you see Tim's comments on the?
There, I've been reviewing them, yes.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten through them all.
I haven't, I haven't even opened it yet, so, okay. Uh, but we're, I would argue that we're probably pretty close on this one.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, maybe a month or so?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, so Dave, lucky you.
What a day.
Yeah, no, just, um, Chip and Tim and I, for the better part of a year plus, have been working on revising four chapters of the village code. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Chip, but it's, it's building, basically building permits, demolition, fences?
Yep, yeah, it's.
And there's a fourth one. But, but basically what, what came out is that there was a whole host of issues that, that our building code official was struggling with, with interpretation and holes in the code and everything. And so basically, we sat down, we came up with a game plan. That's what you saw on the whiteboard in there. And, uh, and what it's turned into is essentially taking those four chapters and mashing them into one big chapter. That's like the, the one stop shop for everything related to the building park. There isn't substantial revisions to the majority of the code language. So because you, I'm sure you've read the code in the last four days.
Probably all of it.
All of it, talk, talk you back, right? So, yeah, I mean, it was a prerequisite to put your hand up in here, so, um.
It was?
Yeah, but, um, basically what it comes down to is the, the major revision here, other than just wholesale collision of these chapters, is that we've gone through and we've created a hierarchy of structure versus, um, you know, in buildings and non-buildings versus, you know, you know, accessory structures versus, you know. So it all, ultimately what it comes down to is, is Tim's execution of code, building department understanding of, of what falls into each category. And then ultimately, it comes down to permitting. And so hope is to have this in everybody's hands and a quick summary of it. And then, you know, our public hearing and, um, adoption of this before we get to re-order. Because then that's when we go through all the permits. And so Tim's, I've asked him to like be prepared to make provisions to the permit forms and all that based on this. So, that being said, Chip, um, if we're going to have like a reasonable draft for discussion in a month, let's say, so two, two meetings from now, and we want to have a public hearing on it, we would have to notice that public hearing later than the next meeting, right? So that we can have a public hearing, say, three meetings from now.
That's, yeah, I mean, it depends somewhat on the, on the B's publication schedule and when that would need to get in. But, um, we need to give, needs to be published at least, uh, five days before a public hearing, so.
So, so if you put on my agenda for next meeting to call for a public hearing on that, so that we can at least get that notice. And then that public meeting can be set for two, two meetings, so a month after.
So by the end of May?
Yes. Um, and then by the first meeting in May, we'll have a draft for the board to review and discuss. That would be the draft that goes out to public for public comment. And then you can have a public hearing. That would be the draft that goes out to public for public comment, and then you can have a public hearing. Okay?
Okay.
Sounds good?
Yep.
All right, you're gonna love it, this. Meeting.
So, but we already, didn't we update the demo code?
We did.
We did.
So there's no revisions to the demo code, it's just that what we're essentially doing is now we're putting all, all permit activities into a single chapter. So the demolition code as currently written, which is chapter eighty-four.
Right.
Is now becoming a section in the building permits.
It never made any sense, so, yeah, it, it, so we, we did update the demo code recently, but we were. In doing so, we were amending, uh, chapter twelve, which is buildings demolitions. But there was also chapter fifteen, which is buildings unsafe and unfinished, and then there's. Chapter twenty-eight, which was basically how the building department operated, and by. What this is all aimed at is by trying to review all of these things for consistency, make sure that they all work together well. We were, became very apparent that they, they weren't working together very well, and there were inconsistencies between the two. And so with the changes even that we made to the demo permit, there were still ambiguous, or the demo chapter, there were still ambiguities. In contradictions with other chapters that talked about demos and structures and permits, so. The goal here has been to, to actually make it all, you know, knock on wood, I'm sure it's not perfect, but, um, consistent and, and. Right. And because, and you know, and frankly, even with that demo update, even in its own, cause we, we actually inadvertently. I think did something that really wasn't the intent, which was to make it. Although again, there's a contradictory provision in another chapter, which essentially said you, you wouldn't need a demo permit to demo something. In zoned, uh, R one, R two, R three. I don't think that was ever the intent, and in fact, you still would need a demo permit because there's this contradictory provision in chapter twenty-eight, so. Anyway, all that's a long way of just saying, this is really probably a long overdue. Effort to actually make sure, because you don't have, I mean, these codes get amended in piece, bits and pieces over years. And if they're not looked at, you know, comprehensively, they start, you start to build in things that are, that are inconsistent and contradictory. So this is all just an effort to at least. It's, I'm not saying everything in the code now is gonna work together well, but hopefully at least. Those provisions that have to do with the regulation of buildings and the permitting process and, and other types of structures. And the permitting process associated with that will all now be in one place and hopefully is consistent as possible.
And, and future amendments then only have to apply upon chapters, across records of the six, but.
All right, understand.
So the community plan then, we have elected to not pursue an update to the meeting.
Right, cause I think we agreed that, uh, the town, Amherst has offered to help us if there's something.
Yes, so I, I'll talk to.
That we, or maybe we want them to look at.
Right.
And, uh, maybe they can, you know, get us through to that point, and then at some point, we just say, hey, look, we really need to hire out and. We need the service of an outside, you know, company, then at that point, I'm open to doing that, but.
Okay.
Um, I think we're, you know, and we, I know we debated this for a while, but I.
We're gonna put that on permanent pause.
Yeah, I, because I think I'd, I'd like to see that money being maybe extended towards our partners at this point, especially if we have that offer for the town.
Okay, so I'll, I'll reach out and then figure that out, so then, speaking of spending money in the parks then. I've handed everybody a copy of this sort of drawings, and these are progress drawings done by a local engineering firm that I hired.
Thank you folks for coming.
I'm, I'm super cheap, sorry Judy, I, I, the expenditure procedures, I, you'll give up, you'll be getting my bill.
Fancy too, it's on long paper, everything.
Yeah, it's on title blocks, I mean, pretty soon it'll be construction documents, but, so, um, what you're looking at is South Lawn Park. Milton is in the bottom right corner and Natalia's just off the page. DPW is top of the page, just on the page. Parkin Wells in the top right. So the suggestion is to relocate the two tennis courts and the basketball court, it's probably easier actually to look at the side sheet, and there's some sort of system. Two tennis courts, the basketball court that are in south more. To the north, parallel to South Lawn, now, on the master plan. Um, these were shown rotated parallel to Village Square Lane. A couple of things, one, they don't fit, and two, uh, one of the few comments that we actually did receive on the master plan was from McRoth, who said that the, uh. The test courts really must be aligned north-south, and I did check on that, it was not wrong. Uh, so, being parallel to South Lawn actually puts it pretty close to the ideal angle on, on the earth. So, um, the trouble is to maintain enough great lawn. To maintain even a modest, you know, soccer field like space. Um, we can't do two tennis courts, however. What I'm showing here is a significant upgrade to the number of types and of games that we have available, so. Uh, if you flip to one oh three, which is the third page. The north half of this paved area would have basketball that would be collegiate length, north-south, and then a half court, east-west on the south half. There would be striping for a dodgeball court, there would be, and then inside that, there's striping for four-square and hopscotch. So this court now can have multiple activities going on, multiple groups, all at the same time. Um, and it doesn't all have to be exclusively basketball.
I love that.
Then the fourth page is southern half of the installation, this is where we put in a full-size, you know, um. US Open size tennis court for singles or doubles, it'll be, you know, green on the inside, red on the outside, just put it down now, but then. Um, I'm advocating for the idea of buying what's, what's an adjustable net system. So this kind of gives Ben the ebb and jibes a little bit, and I can relate, but. The net would allow for tennis, pickleball, and volleyball. And so then there's striping for each one of those three games within the footprint of the tennis court, and then at the north end dividing. The tennis court from the basketball court. Um, I'm proposing sixteen-foot highs, twenty-foot wide concrete wall, which would be handball as well as, um, tennis. By yourself, which can't be vandalized with a hole saw in the future, like our current plywood wall was.
And that's a great thing.
It is.
Not that, not that it can't be.
Right, but so.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do kids still play handball?
They will now.
They, that was a thing when I was a kid, but it's a long time ago.
Yeah, so, so we lose one tennis court. But in exchange, we're gaining one, two, three, four, five. Six, seven, eight, nine different alternative sport activities in, in the footprint.
And so, and I can tell you that, cause I'm at that park quite, quite often, and I can tell you, I have never been there where I've seen. Two tennis games going on at the same time. So I've only ever seen one court being used at a time over there.
That, that was the general consensus in parts.
Yeah, and that's, and I, right, they. But I love, I love adding all those different amenities, um, having more of a sports court area. That allows for multiple usage, and I think that that's a great. Great idea.
And then, and then that puts the sport activities on the far end.
Yeah.
Opposite the commercial spaces, keeps it as far away from the residences who will be, you know, irritated by the noise of pickleball, which I'm gonna attest to. Is the most irritating game to listen to. But, uh, but on the other hand, the fact that, you know, we have a pickleball court, literally people will be lining up to use it, because I don't know what their obsession is with pickleball, but people love it. So then, uh, the idea would be to build that first, and then once that's operational, then we decommission the tennis courts, the basketball courts that we have. And that becomes law, at least for the time being, the last part of this is you'll notice I've spotted in sixteen, I mean, twenty-four picnic shelter. It's positioned kind of oddly in the context of, you know, the space, but it has, there's a meeting for it behind it. Ultimately, the idea is that the playground equipment is going to be replaced and that will swing around. To be in the footprint of the tennis courts and basketball courts.
So this playground equipment here that exists beyond the Milton's gonna go somewhere in here.
It, north, do you see where that line is that's kind of running through the ashtray?
Yes, I do.
It'll be north of that one, between there and the walkway.
Oh, okay.
So that's kind of the allocated space for the tennis courts and then, or sorry, for the playground. And then what you're not seeing is that ultimately, the, the shelter is positioned in a way that allows the. Softball diamond to be reasserted into that corner. And to be shot, you know, so, so as deep down. So that, that still leaves space for, you know, the section masters walk, as it's called, leading up to Village Square Lane, the extension of the high trail. Uh, the, the, currently the position of the splash pad is just off the page. Um, so this, this lawn area that will have the playground here will be opposite splash pad, which should just, just off the page there. And, uh, we were talking actually to Basil's grandson about his company about, you know, designs for that and things like this, so. Get some budget numbers for those, that's gonna be another year or two on that, but, um, that's currently the proposal. Ben was telling me that, and Ben offered this, so, you know, when he, when he grumbles about it later, just remember he volunteered.
All right, what did he offer?
He, he.
He's doing the install himself, what, what's he offered?
Yeah, he, he, no, he claimed that DPW could do a vast majority of the, of this work. That when it comes down to it, really it's about the sports court itself, the pavement that have the specialties and things. That would have to get contracted out, similar to the pavements that are done around the playground. But that the mul- bulk of the earth moving and the demolition and stuff, that all be handled by our guys, so that, that could save us a significant sum of money.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
And crew.
So.
Not all that different than digging out a playground.
Yeah, right.
Literally, we're doing the same thing, but.
Yeah, so the other thing to mention then, since we're looking at this, um, would be those stakes that you saw, that I'm not gonna talk too much about.
Yeah.
Those were positioned in this area, here, immediately opposite DPW, and we figured out the space that was allocated that will allow.
I could have figured you did, but I just, yeah, I, I could.
Um.
Good.
And there are other stakes to find over at Island Park, so that's.
And I saw some on the trail too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, well, I have, I just have to say that I love this and I think, I'm, Matt, you did, you just, you knocked it out of the park here. You really did, and I, I think we will have some fabulous parks by twenty twenty-five.
That's the goal.
So thank you for all of your hard work and time and energy, and I don't know, Keaton, I know you have that up, but. For those who can't see this, I mean, there's several pages here, you know, at least six pages of, um, engineering specs and. And I know that this took a lot of time to put together, so thank you for that.
Yep, I'll leave a copy for you in your, uh, mailbox, Ellen.
Oh, thank you, I think I picked up some over the weekend.
Nope, cause I just printed these five minutes before coming here.
Oh, there were other plans that also looked very similar though, I don't know where those came from.
Oh, maybe that was from.
Or that would have been from.
Dan, maybe for the trees?
Well, either that or was it this stuff?
I don't know.
I, I think it might, the colored stuff.
Was it the color stuff?
You weren't at our last meeting, that also handed out some stuff with colored pictures and drawings and renderings of South Lawn.
Oh, yeah, that was that.
Yeah, that's probably what it was.
This is, this is just turning into something.
Okay, thank you, it looks great though, Nick.
Thank you. Ben, um, I copied you on the email earlier, there's a, there's a landscape plan at the back end of this package. I don't know how important it is at this point to figure out plantings and stuff for this, but I figured, you know, I'd hire a landscape architect to do that, do you know anybody?
Yeah, it's a good idea, I probably should. Forward, do I have this in my mailbox or is this, uh, something you can send to me digitally?
Uh, I sent you, I copied you on an email tonight at like five thirty, there's a PDF download.
There she is, got it.
Okay, so just take a look at it.
So you also mentioned, um, the, the park shelter at Island Park.
Yes.
What, what are your thoughts on that, what do you wanna?
Parks, oh, yeah, okay, so, that's a million, yeah, so. So we, so as part of the master plan, there was discussion about, um, adding a small sort of patio space, so to speak, on the Kiuga side. And taking down the railings that box in that side.
Yeah.
So that, because it gets very dead endy, right? So the idea being that we can close up, we have the, we have the, uh, zip-up walls, those could still go on there, but. It would be a little bit more open, and then, you know, basically it needs a little bit of a facelift. And what I'd really love to do is have a naming ceremony and have it named after Carolyn. And it'd be really great if you did, if you were able to do that before you left as deputy mayor, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
It's okay.
Yeah, but, um.
We can always call him back, we know where to do this.
We could, we know where, where to find him, right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but it, I wanted to call up the Slithy Pavilion and actually put their, put her name up on, above the, the door or anything. Give it a, just give it a spruce up, and then there was this conversation about the murals.
Yeah.
And she's always wanted to put a mural on that wall. That was the whole reason that wall is that big blank wall to begin with, according to Carolyn, so. Um, it's just never materialized. So if there was a way that we could pull all of those various disparate things together in twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Yes, so we've got some money left to do that with, so.
We do, we have, we have upwards of eighty thousand dollars as yet unallocated for capital improvements at the parks for this year. And we can spend some of that on trails and the, you know, there's still some money we spend on bathrooms.
Right, the, the, I heard bathrooms, yeah.
But if you, if you lopped off thirty grand and said, we still have fifty to invest in the pavilion. Uh, I mean, I think.
We should finish that off, yeah. Yeah, well, let's.
And if Ben's guys are busy on South Lawn, it's gonna have to be hired out, it's just a paint job for the most part. And patio, which they're not gonna do patio.
Right, right, but then, and we need to find a, a muralist, an artist.
Carolyn's face. She hit that.
Eventually could have yielded for on the backside of the.
And for handball, I mean, the walk for handball.
Yeah.
I love it, I love it.
Yeah.
The neighborhood youths will probably do the mural first, but, you know.
Some streak of graffiti, yeah. Um, okay, well, I, I think, I, I love the sound of all of that, so, um, let's, let's get it done, let's start getting what we need to a place to do it.
Okay.
Um, I will say, Ben, uh, Island Park. The benches and the rocks that you placed around that play area look great and are being used heavily already, so. Thank you for putting those in.
Well, I, I don't know that there could be enough places that are absolutely swarming with people.
Well, it's a start, I mean, we can always add to it.
Yeah.
Okay, and then do, are we, as far as, you know, we're talking about retaining the pavilion, are, are we still, um. Are we, is parks wanna sit with that color scheme or?
These are questions, yeah, that, that's not, that's, that's never discussed.
Okay, well, maybe that could be something you bring up Wednesday night, cause, um, you know, I, I, right now it's gray and white.
Let me know if we're gonna change the color scheme like now, because we're about to paint it this week.
Oh, are you really?
Yeah, we were gonna go back just with the gray that we have there.
Well, can we do, and so instead of that, could we do that dark village green, since, since that is our, our color? Um, I, I prefer to maybe see that as opposed to the gray.
Oh, Ben, are you, are you guys painting the whole shebang or are you just doing touches?
Oh, no, we're gonna, the whole thing needs it, and you can't.
Oh, well, golly, then, yeah, let's.
Let's do it.
Let's do that.
Great, all right, that's easy, that's just.
So, we're not too late.
We can save you some effort, cause we can tell you which railings to take out and you don't have to paint those.
Wait, wait, which one are we talking about? Oh, I'm talking the small pavilion right now.
Oh, no, we're talking the pavilion pavilion. The big one.
The one that's slated to be painted right now is the small pavilion.
Okay, so, okay, and that's, that's great, so I still wanna talk colors on that though, and I'd like to get rid of the gray and white. And do with that dark, that deep dark forest village green, um. And white, yeah, right, like the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everybody seems to have a different name for it, but I, like, I call it a forest green.
Hunter Green from, uh, Rust-Oleum. That's it.
Yeah, same thing we use on the front of the countertop.
Yeah, that, I don't know if that was the Rust-Oleum paint, but on this, uh, you know, the door here, probably inside here was that Hunter. Yeah, I don't know if that was the Rust-Oleum paint, but on this, you know, the door here, probably inside here, was that Hunter Green Rust-Oleum, but. Yeah.
So you're, so then you 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 totally burst my bubble then, so you're not painting the big.
Wasn't on the plan, but doesn't say it can't be put on, because everything we're doing so far is not on the plan as of a couple months ago, so.
We got a year to kick out for here, you know?
But I, but the nice thing is, you know, that will be the new colors one that's going to be this painted.
Yeah, I mean, and look at Ben, I'm not expecting D P W to to fight this off. I mean, that that painting job is a big job. We had to let that to a contractor, so be it.
Yeah, yeah, we did it four years ago.
The the big pavilion?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
All right, well, I mean, I leave that to you. I'm not, I'm not pushing you to do that. If you've got the crew and you've got the time, go for it, but.
We will be painting the small pavilion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Green and white, yep.
Green and white.
Thank you, cool.
Great. It will be, yeah. Um, and then I noticed you did take down that split rail fence at the end of the memory trail Cayuga. And I'm guessing you're gonna remove it at the end of Milton, correct? I'm sorry.
Yep, just haven't got to that end.
Okay, yeah.
We will get it.
It it looks so much more open and inviting with the, what you did take out already, so.
So we're taking, you're talking about taking the split rail out at the end of Milton?
Yeah. It's all falling down.
Oh, yeah, no, I get that it's a bad shape.
And I thought we could put some boulders there, because really, that doesn't, you know, that's kind of stuff a car, if somebody drives down, you know.
That was, that was, that was my comment.
Yeah, so. Right, so I thought, and if we could, it might just be nice to put just some big rocks there at the end.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Yeah, no, it would be far enough off, but it's gotten beat up, I think, from the construction.
Yeah.
It's like half knocked down and.
It probably could be, it could still be.
Yeah, I don't know. It looks like somebody ran into it over the winter. The one part of it is almost pushed down, so.
I'm happy to.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then, okay, so anything else?
Nope, I'm going.
Hey, you're done completely?
Yep.
All right. So trustee Sherman, I know. You're not gonna have much on there, obviously, but did you have any questions or comments at this point?
Well, I did hear from one of my many village family friends, when they found out that I had been appointed and concerned Island Park. They said that, is there one flag or two flag in front of the big, there's the U S flag? Is there a Jewish flag?
There's two flags, one U S, one village.
Well, their only comment was, they really like sitting in the park, but those flags look a little shabby. And wanted to know what the replacement schedule was. I'll leave that in your hands, Ben. I was just bringing it up.
Consider that.
Okay, great. Anything else?
No. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Tori?
Yes, Earth Day updates. I did receive an email from the Dare to Repair Cafe requesting ten tables and ten chairs for the event. Is that doable?
Yeah, that's standard, sure.
Okay, and electricity. So I know we have electricity along the wall that they would need to plug in their equipment. Do they need drills or such, Ben?
There's electricity, I'm afraid.
There used to be, anyway, along the wall, right, Ben? Of the big pavilion?
Oh, and you're in the pavilion, yes, you're speaking.
Yeah, the Dare to Repair Cafe is gonna be in the pavilion, and we're gonna have Messenger Woods, who agreed to the seventy-five dollar, whatever you call it, not really donation, but payment to bring their animals. They will be in the small pavilion. Okay? And that's June fifth, so all the painting should be done by then, right? Okay, my, so that's for Earth Day, but I'm glad that we have the tables and chairs set. That's good. Now, the Noel Pavilion, I, you know, we did the cleanup at the, I was, I didn't clean up, actually, I just sat around and watched. My question, Ben, around the rotary circle where Ross, our, our present park occupant likes to rest and sleep and sometimes stay the night, whatever. There's a lot of little gravel stones and a million cigarette butts. They don't mix. You cannot rake the cigarette butts without raking out all those stones. And I was wondering if we could put pavers in that area and get rid of the little stones. It's a mess.
I don't see why not, sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, because right now, the cleanup is, was impossible, because we couldn't pick anything out of the little stones. And they're all over the sidewalks and whatnot, so if we can get rid of those and just put pavers down. Pete agreed with me, that'd be a huge advantage for cleanup for the park. Okay? And then what else do I have? Oh, yes, another thing I have. There is a particular volunteer on the Glen Park Joint Board. His name is Frank Jaworski. And Frank actually goes through the park on a daily basis and cleans up, literally. This man, every day, walks the park, jogs the park, and cleans the park for us. Now, knowing that, and he brings his daughter with him as well often, I was wondering if we could start a honor a volunteer a month, you know, and present him with a certificate of appreciation, or do a little write-up for the webpage. Just to honor some of our volunteers outside of the yearly picnic that we normally do. What do you think about that?
Yeah, we actually, in the in the past, I mean, we've, in the newsletter, have done a volunteer of the quarter or season.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, let's do that, for sure.
Because, I mean, this, he, he told me over Saturday, the things, the garbage he picks up most presently, on an average, he'll collect about one hundred masks throughout the park that people dispose of. Isn't that terrible? So I really wanna honor him in some way, and I, you know, I wanna thank him for all his time he puts into the park for us. And he's not even a village resident. He's actually from the town, so kudos to him. I appreciate that a lot. Now, back to the Noel Pavilion, though, what is the status now on the new roof and gutters? Now, we're into April. I know we were waiting on the monies from the town. Judy, is this something we can now work work with, go forward with, the new roof?
Yes, but we gotta remember that anything that gets ordered cannot be ordered by the committee chairs, committee members. The lia, the committee chair should take it to the liaison who brings it to either Ben or I, depending on what it is. And then anything, any products get ordered through Village Hall, because we have a situation with the electricity that there was a meeting in the park with the electrician, and he was kind of flabbergasted, because he already had it on his list, and then it was like, he was told, you know, oh, this needs to be done, so now he went back and redid his schedule, but then out of respect for Ben, he didn't call Ben to say, you know, what's going on, is this? So we have to be very diligent to make sure that we're following the right protocol for.
Right, are those those, the the outlets, Judy, what you're talking about, that were added?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was there for that, but, see, unfortunately, our chairman becomes a little confused at times, and communication is lacking between the parties. I know, I'm sorry, and I apologize.
Because you, you're new, and I understand that. However, we've had issues with Glen Park Committee Chair and members deciding on their own what they wanna order, and they would go to Ed Jones and order stuff on their own account, and then turn in the receipts, and then, of course, they were charged sales tax. So we finally got that situation taken care of.
Okay.
So they know the right way, and I think because you're new, we just kind of push things a little bit.
Right.
Just to make sure that we're following the right protocol for.
Okay, you know, Judy, I will speak with you more closely on that, because I know there are a few things that we need for the Noel Pavilion in in the future. There's a project we're working on, but we'll talk about that at another time, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right. Oh, yeah, then, what else do we have? The Section House, I did ask Tim if there was any updates, especially referenced the electric and the water and the gas, and I did not receive a reply. Maybe Ben, do you have any updates on the utilities to the Section House?
Not from Natali, no, not heard anything. We are looking, we are working with Zach right now, just to get power in the place. Just, we've just undertaken that under our own.
Oh, you are? Because that that was under the agreement with Natali, that they would supply the the electric, the gas, and the water to the Section House?
We'll, we'll send them a bill then.
What's that?
We'll send them the bill.
Okay.
See if they pay it.
All right, well, because I I reread the agreement the other day, and I just wanted to make sure that we hold them to that, okay?
Well, I don't know exactly how we can hold them to that.
I I don't, I I don't have the agreement in front of me, but I don't think it's that they are going to provide and pay for electricity to the Section Houses, that they were, they had to put in, had to put in a new service line, because so that it could be hooked up, right?
Right, it's gonna be the service line, and that's what I was asking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Line is.
Yeah, no, that that was definitely part of the agreement.
Yes, that's what I'm asking about, the service line.
We've had no reply from them on when that will ever possibly occur.
Right, so that that's the point, is that we, we notified them six weeks or more ago now, that they needed to pull that together, and Bobby issued a statement that said they'd be doing this and that and the other thing. And now here it is, six weeks, eight weeks later, and they haven't pulled the trigger on any of that stuff. So if the village is gonna have, you know, a new service tap provided to that building in a new box for our own purposes, and and they failed to provide that, then, yeah, they get billed for it.
Well, hang on, so I gotta go back and take a look at the agreement, or maybe we need to make an official demand on them or to, due to their laws, because as I recall, they posted a we had them post a performance bond for this, so if that's the case, then we would wanna make a claim on the bond.
Yeah, we are right, whatever the methods, yes.
Yeah. Okay, but I just don't want that to be forgotten along the way, okay?
Yeah, no, absolutely, because it's easy for that stuff to fall through the cracks if it doesn't, yeah, so.
Yeah, and, you know, we, I'm just, sorry, tip, sorry.
No, that's all right, but yeah, let's talk, yeah, tell me, let me know exactly what they still haven't done under that agreement, so that we can, you know, make sure we stay on top of them.
We have no utility hookups yet.
Okay.
Okay, so that's important.
And
Yeah.
I've had a lot of concern, you know, and it was mentioned earlier tonight about security on the, on our premises. And we have no power, and we have no eyes over there. And I can't get eyes over in that area, cameras, forgive me, if I don't, if I don't have power, so. One thing leads to the other, so.
Yep.
Forgive me of the board if I failed to announce this previously, but it's all in trying to get that facility to be less of a proactive nuisance.
Right.
Can I, so what is, just so I'm clear on this, what exactly is our end goal with that building as far as usage and then future ownership of it?
Who are you asking, Dad?
I'm just asking anybody who knows.
Well, I mean, so the last time it was discussed, so the Lehigh Valley guys, they need office space.
Yeah.
And they're, they were more than happy to create another arrangement like they have with the depot. So it's a land lease deal, essentially, right? And that they would take, they only, but they only need the space on the second floor for their purposes.
Okay.
That's the square footage they're looking for. So then, the first floor is then therefore unprogrammed at this point. And there has been any number of suggestions as to what that could be, including a new home for the Williams Historical Society, among other things. That's been the most common topic, now that that's hit Peter, but. But then, you know, failing that, I don't know, it could be any number of things. Or nothing at all, or the depot guys take over a whole building, and if they wanna put a use in the first order, so be it. But that's, that's currently its, its direction, the idea being that it become a an asset to the Lehigh Railroad campus.
Yeah, I mean, you showed that on your your layout, Matt, you know, with that nice walkway that led from the the trains to the Section House. I love that idea. You know, it kind of combined it, yes.
Yeah, well, right, and then that, and that lane serves multi-functions. It's wide enough to have a a truck go down it, like the Lehigh Trail is.
Right.
But it had more space, and it was actually suggested as a permanent home for the farmer's market.
Right.
Among other type events, like, you know, tenting events like that. As well as potentially serving the function as an exit out of Tali, should that ever need to materialize.
Cool.
Hope that never happens.
All right. And I just have one final request to Ben. Ben, you hear me? Can you please fix the sign at Oak Grove on Main Street? I had another request recently.
What, the parking sign?
Yeah, did you paint it yet? Wow, you have to paint that arrow, because people are parking right on the curb. Please.
Oh, please, too.
Just paint that one arrow out. That's all we're asking.
I feel like the wrong arrow, I feel like the wrong roses got painted.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. All right, it's getting late here. It's ten till ten, so I'm.
I'm a zombie.
All right, Chip, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Administrator Kindred, I know you have yoga in the park.
I do, I have actually two. And so I have two women who did yoga in the park last year, one of whom is Monica Zuko. She did Saturdays at Garrison, ten thirty in the morning. She would like to know if she can do it again.
Yes.
The other one is Shakira Sandra Bloom. Last year, she did Tuesday and Thursday evenings and Wednesday mornings at Island Park. This year, she would like to do Saturday mornings at Island Park. Okay, I will let them both know.
I think it's great.
So far, those are the only two I've heard from, and if anyone else comes through, I'll let you know. Uh, my next thing is, I sent an email out on Friday about Nighcon Conference, Annual Conference, coming up, June ninth to the eleventh up in Bolton Landing. It had, registration has not opened up yet. It's supposed to open up this week. The first hundred fifty registrants will get in, so I need to know if anybody's interested in going, and and then we'll go from there. Is anybody interested?
I'm tempted, but I feel guilty about saying that. You know, I still don't know where Bolton Landing is, though.
It's up on Lake George.
Where?
Up on Lake George.
Yeah, it's, it's about ten miles north of Lake George Village on the west shore of Lake George.
Five hour drive?
Yeah.
Yep. It's at Sagamore.
I don't need to throw myself in the hundred and fifty.
You're in there. Dave, are you?
Yeah.
I think you should, that'd be really good. I I think I'm, I, I guess, but I'll I'll confirm with you tomorrow.
Eileen, I'm not sure what your situation will be then, I don't know if you'll be able to.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know either. That's why I can't commit.
Yeah, and the only reason I say this, because I know my husband can't, so, but you guys are different doctors, so I don't know.
Is he driving already?
My husband is driving, yes, he's been driving. It's from about two and a half weeks. My husband is driving, yes. He's been driving for about two and a half weeks, but I think he did the left knee.
Oh, I have the right knee, and I'm not allowed to drive for at least two months, and then they're going to see if I can drive.
But even, even so, the driving is one thing, but sitting in a car for five hours.
Horrible. It's absolutely horrible. I can't even sit in a chair for a half an hour.
All right, so if you are going, let Judy know by tomorrow, so when that opens, she can fire away with the registration. Okay. Crew chief, Villanen, do you have anything else to add?
Well, I know it's late, just a couple items I want to touch on. One of the stakes that you've seen around, that's the tree donation coordinated through trustee Yates. And it's free to, we were, are shooting to get all, well, the, the larger trees in South Park and Island Park by the 24th. So it's a, and we're in the process of the procurement of those trees. So that's going to be a pretty heavy lift for us to, to bang that out. And we also had last week a sewer audit from the EPA. I bring this up because part of the findings, as we popped open manholes in the village, was a tremendous amount of grease coming out of our restaurants. And that's not a good thing. That is a maintenance and facilities issue of the restaurants that needs to be addressed. If you've been on this board, you've heard me probably say this before. And I've been working with Tim, and I believe Chip was copied in an email, just trying to find if there is a manner of that, by which we can enforce and perhaps fine these restaurants for non-compliance. So this is, that's ongoing.
But isn't there an issue with that, that even if you find them, it's just more cost-effective for them to just pay the fine and have you guys do the cleanup, or no?
I mean, not if we set the fine high enough.
No.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I'm talking about the existing fine, that it just doesn't really mean much. And, and, okay, so.
They get fined right now, and there is a question as to whether or not we have the mechanism in place to levy fines. So Chip was looking into that.
Well, really, I mean, I think there are a couple issues. One is, again, so our sewer ordinance, I suspect, I mean, again, it's very, well, 2005, 2003.
It is a model ordinance that was.
It was a model ordinance, and, and it has, the enforcement actually, unlike most of our enforcement, is not in the code enforcement officers, with the village engineer, which, of course, and we don't have a non-staff engineer. And that's probably not something, and it doesn't make any sense for it to be our engineer of record unless that's something that was included in the scope of what we're asking them to do. So that's one issue, but there, there are, there is a, there are fine provisions in here. And then, you know, and going to court, civil penalties, but you know, there may be, but I don't know what those fines are presently, and there may be other tools that we might want to use that aren't in here, but, but presently, I mean, there, I, I, there's no reason that people who are violating the sewer ordinance can't be fined, I don't believe.
Okay, I know that was one of his direct.
Yeah, I, I mean, as, as long as, as long as, in fact, there's a violation of our code. I mean, that, that those discharge of, that grease violates our code, which presumably it does.
It does.
And, and the fine amounts under the code are not insignificant. I mean, they, they are, they can be fined an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Yeah, that would do.
For violation or per day basis. And then get, if they don't get paid, 9% a month in interest. And a lien can be asserted, so, but, but again, this all rests with the village engineer. So we may just want to take that, that's a simple change, to put it in our building department or our public works department to do that, but, but there's actually pretty strong.
That's okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
It's just, it's never been done.
Yeah.
And do they know which specific restaurants that are doing this? Could they tell?
Oh, absolutely. I, I don't know if I really want to go into it.
No, you don't have to. I was just curious. No, that, that should not be. That's horrible. No, absolutely.
I mean, to the tune of thousands of gallons.
Terrible, absolutely terrible. It's horrible for the environment. What do they think?
So, and it affects upstream users, because that's how you get plugs and.
Terrible, yeah.
So, and I'm just sort of notifying the board that we're trying to become a little bit more proactive, and it might be more punitive, honestly, for these violations moving forward with these systems of control. So that's that, fun stuff. And then also, we're looking to have porta-potties as per usual, correct? In all of our parks?
I don't know, hello?
Is everybody still there?
Yeah, I mean, where we usually put them, Glen Park, Garrison Park.
We don't need them in South Lawn.
We don't need them in South Lawn and Island, yeah.
I, I may bring them in temporarily for Island, because I'm thinking of getting them in sooner than we typically do.
Oh, yeah.
We usually wait till mid-May. It's, it's obviously nice enough for a lot of people to be out. I'm still a little cautious about turning the water on in those unprotected bathrooms.
Yeah, okay, yeah, if you want to, yeah, bring them in, because there's definitely people at the park.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we haven't really noticed any serious issues, and I hope that the porta-potties don't become a public nuisance. But we'll, we'll cross that when it comes. We get a lot of vandalism down in Glen Park. And then finally, that's it. I'm heading out of town for about 10 days. I'll be accessible, as always.
Nice.
Things come up, and yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Just one quick thing. There was a gentleman who called a week, a week or so ago, and he suggested that we find a way to light Glen Falls in a similar fashion that Niagara Falls is.
Okay, thanks for the suggestion.
I, I did tell him that within our LWRP, local waterfront redevelopment program, that we are planning some things, and that was discussed, actually, at the last meeting in in March, correct, what was March, right? In March, and doing so, you know, it, it would be up to you guys, not necessarily the Glen Park Joint Board, but the village board, village board who have the final say. But the Glen Park Joint Board would not want something like that down.
Would not want.
No, they, they would not want exterior lighting illuminating falls.
Now, there is one homeowner that does light it up, or people would want.
There is, yeah, I don't know, it's, it's like, right, it's attached to the back of his property.
Yeah.
Well, it's private.
Just.
It's halfway down the hill.
Right. And then there was another thing that the gentleman suggested, and I said, you know, that would be up to the private homeowners themselves. If they wanted to collectively do that, they can. I told him that the ownership of the falls is actually, some of those areas fall on the property.
Yes.
It's partially privately owned.
Right, yeah.
So I, I told him that it's something that could be written into our plan for the future, and, you know, maybe there's you know, something we could, that we could do for, you know, lighting grants or something like that that was in LWRP eventually, but you know, right now, it's, it's an idea.
What is, what is the basis for their objection?
No, it's not an objection, it's a suggestion.
No, the main point is.
The Glen Park Joint Board.
The Joint Board.
Oh, objective.
You know.
Do they have a reason for that?
What was the reason? Pete Warren wrote this very long email. I, I could forward it to the board. It was actually in his email that I, that he wrote, I believe. Because we were talking about improvements that could be made to the park, et cetera. I, I don't remember his exact reasoning. I really don't.
Okay.
So sometimes he doesn't necessarily give background on a reason. Sometimes he just gives reasons. And then you go with it, but.
And Air Force Colonels, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is not the worst of all.
Exactly, you know, but I'll get back to the gentleman who made the suggestion. I'll let all that brought it to the board. You know, it could be something that could be done in the future, so just wanted to.
Actually, I, loo- looking at the, at the GIS right now, actually, the entire falls is privately owned.
Correct, yeah.
26 Mill Street, basically, it's on his lot, or their lot, I don't know.
So officially, if, if the guy who's lighting it is on the personal next door, officially, he's violating the, the village ordinance for lighting.
For exterior lighting, yeah. I mentioned that to the gentleman who called, too. I said, you know, we just passed a new zoning ordinance last year, and, you know, any exterior lighting is going to be subject to that, so. Anyway.
Give the guy a break, it looks nice.
Yeah, no.
It does, it does, so.
But it's not cause of fraud, it's not cause of fraud.
Anyway, that's, that's all there is for it, so.
All right, well, that, that's it, then. Everybody, I think we've covered everything. Thank you for all of your input. Trustee Sherman, you've made it through your first, your first meeting. And hopefully, not your last.
Who was that? Bill Gates, who was, that's the former Secretary of State. Said it's never too late to stop talking. So I like that.
Well, thank you, though.
Thank you.
So we'll see everyone in two weeks. April 26th is our next board meeting.
I won't be here. I will be out of town. I'm not sure if I can zoom in, because I think I'm supposed to be on an.
That's fine.
That's very convenient.
I don't need the reservations.
Is this for the auto ranks?
No, no, Melanie and I are going down to.
Bye, everybody, goodnight.
All right, thank you, everyone, goodnight.